Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 14th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. I move to call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting to order. Mrs. Schultz, will you call the roll?
Trustee Harkema.
Here.
Trustee Burden.
Present.
Trustee McAdie.
Here.
Please rise for the invocation we have with us this evening. Pastor Cecil Day of the White House Church. And then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Emily Palm, we thank you this evening for your love. Thank you Father for your grace. For this evening, thank you for our community for the blessings that we have to be able to live, work, and serve. And for our leaders, probably ask this evening if you would just give your leadership and guidance. You have decisions, maybe ask these things here.
All right, the first item on the agenda. We have a presentation this evening from the Fairfield Prevention Coalition.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Joe Mark, and I'm the Executive Director of the Fairfield Prevention Coalition. You might have heard of us. You might have run across some community somewhere. If you wanted to take a few minutes of your time on the agenda to just maybe clarify who we are and where we're trying to get to, and maybe answering questions right now. I brought with me my 18th, the President of our Coalition, Scott Clark. You guys might know Scott from what you've been doing. And then the other side of the 18th is Devin Duncan, one of our graduating seniors this year. Devin, how many years have you served on the youth coalition?
Six.
Six years.
Maybe more. I'll count mine.
Great. So I just have a couple of slides. Nothing crazy here, but our vision is a safe and healthy, drug-free community where all youth can thrive. And again, as I said, I'm Joe Mark, and I'm the Director of the Fairfield Prevention Coalition. So I've spent the last 30 years working with young people around the country. I'm from Erie, Pennsylvania, and I've lived in Lexington for about, but I've been here in Ohio for about the last seven years. What I do is I travel around the country and I work with coalitions and I work with youth. And I've worked with over 150,000 youth in 30 years, trying to figure out how we can make our community a better place and how do youth fit into that puzzle of what they bring to the table. So that's who we are. Julie, thank you. You can do it, and Julie, thank you. So I've just got a quick facts here. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The Fairfield City School District is our fiscal agent, so when we get federal grants or other kinds of grant funding, they are our fiscal agents. We go to them for requests for payment of bill and things like that. So we have a nice solid fiscal agent. Our community board has over 50 members of organizations. We're live now?
We're live.
So now I got to turn it back down, right? Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. So when we first started out, we had five or seven people sitting around the table about 20 years ago. That was before my time. We actually have about 67 people on our rosters, and we've been doing our meetings virtually. And we have all sectors of the government and the community represented, faith leaders. We have youth serving agencies. We have law enforcement. We have state legislatures and a bunch of, we have youth, we have parents. We have everyone around the table who needs to be there to help shape our communities where they need to be. We have four youth-led coalitions that are nationally recognized. We've been recognized in Washington, DC. We've been recognized in Columbus, Ohio, the state capital, over the number of youth and the things that our youth are doing in Fairfield. We currently have, on any given day, over 145 youths from four schools on our coalitions. And we're not just meeting and eating pizza and talking about how to save the dolphins. We are actively investing in our community and trying to reduce drug use and trying to get young people who are at risk to use drugs and alcohol to stay away from those things and make better decisions. True? So our four focus areas for the year are reducing anxiety and depression in youth, especially in ninth grade students. And we're using our youth data to drive this. Low student perception of harm, so if students think that substances aren't harmful to them, they're at elevated risk to use them, including prescription pain medications that can lead to heroin addictions. Low parent disapproval of substances. That means that parents who are like, you know, drinking alcohol is not a big deal, smoking tobacco products is not a big deal, like we're going after that parental norm. And that's a lot of work, folks, a lot of work. And lack of connectedness for students. If there's one thing that we have found out, youth who are connected to their community and their schools are protected, and it's a buffer from the risky behaviors that a lot of other youth get involved in, from dropping out of school to teen pregnancy to violence to delinquency to suicide. So we've got to keep our youth, all of our youth connected. True? So what we're really trying to do is help each other, and we're talking about the students now. We're trying to help them get through this thing called life. And, you know, life throws curves at you, throws roadblocks and potholes, and you guys know all about this, but they're just starting off in life. And when these things hit them, it affects their academics, it affects their mental capacity, and it actually leads them down the road to possible substance use as a self-medication method. True? So nationally, one of the things I did when I worked for Penn State University and the University of Kentucky was I've always studied youth data for years and years. And nationally, what we're seeing is that depression and anxiety is rising in our youth. Suicidal thoughts and suicidal attempts are rising. Using vapor products is rising, and the problem with that is there could be anything in that vapor product. There can be carfentol or phenol laced in that vapor product. So and a lot of our youth are, actually, the ones that do use vapor products have marijuana in those products, and that's not good either. And the last thing we're working on is peer and parental approval about using drugs and alcohol. That's rising. We need that, we need disapproval to be going up and approval going down. That's what we need to be doing. You guys all know this. We can work with our kids in school all day long. They got to go back into an environment that may not necessarily share the same values that we share. So. And you can hit it one more time, Julie, if you don't mind. So one of the things I did find out was the number one protective factor for preventing teen suicide and substance use is connectedness. So that's the buzzword of the day today, keeping youth connected. Connected to what? Hobbies, clubs, activities, teachers, your school resource officer, your soccer coach, your wrestling coach, your choir director. We're working really hard to get all of our youth in our schools in Fairfield connected. And this is like 10,000 students. This is a large-scale environmental impact project that we've been doing for so long. So we really focus on connectedness because this is a strengths-based approach to substance use prevention. So and this whole idea of the power of adult-youth relationships, the symbol of most common factor for building positive youth development is at least one stable and committed relationship with a positive adult role model. You guys all know this. We could go around the room. You could tell us stories about your wrestling coach. For me, there's the custodian at my high school who got me to go to college, and my baseball coach, and my homeroom teacher. Without those three guys, I don't stand before you today. And so we're trying to build these kind of relationships with all of our youth in all of our schools in Fairfield City Schools. We use a approach, a strengths-based approach called the 40 Developmental Assets. It's finding what works well. What's the spark for a young person? How do we get them connected? Do they like electronics? Do they like welding? Do they like writing? Do they like singing? Do they like dancing? And getting them involved as early as an age as possible. So we use strengths-based approaches. We don't use reality tours, and we don't use scare tactics. I've done all the research on it. I'm a national speaker and an expert on this subject. We do not use scare tactics. It lasts about 30 days. After about 30 days, youths go right back to their old behaviors. So we've got to have something more consistent. So just real quick, I just want to share a couple of things from our youth coalition. We have over, well, we had 101, between 101 and 110 middle school youth on our coalitions at Creekside and Crossroads Middle Schools. We've got 100 and some students there. And you can follow that, Julie. Okay? Yep. And if you go back one more, Julie. So at our freshman school, we didn't have all of them here, but we have about 37 students on our freshman coalition. Now you can go to the high school. At our high school, even after COVID and our numbers were down with youth involvement on our coalition, you can go ahead and go, Julie, one more for her. We had 65 high school students on our coalition. So when you add all that up, it comes to about 135 students. Here's the deal. I travel around to a lot of conferences around the country, and people approach me and say, you know, I got four kids on my youth coalition that represent the whole county in Tennessee or wherever we're at. And I said, oh, we're doing pretty well here. We started recruiting them back in sixth grade to be on our coalition, training them about drugs, alcohol, and what works and what doesn't work. And then we asked them to be the positive change agents out there. So just to kind of show us off for one second, I want to have our icon senior Devin Duncan, who's the man of the hour. We'd like to have him just say a few words about the youth coalition experience.
Thank you. It was six. So I counted back, it was six. So the coalition truly is something special, and especially as we start heading into this last couple of weeks, we spend a lot of time reflecting, spend a lot of time saying goodbye. And one of the things that I really can appreciate about the coalition is actually the impact that we have and the work that we do. Just today, I was in Chicago earlier today, and for the past five days for a national leadership conference, and I got back to the high school around 4:00. And I had a meeting at 4:30, meeting at 5:00, and a meeting at 5:30. And then I got to go to a baseball game, and now I'm here. And I say this because sometimes you get off of those meetings, they get off of those Zoom calls, and you're like, that could have been an email, or that was a waste of time. And that is not something that this coalition is about. Not only do we have consistent attendance at every single one of our meetings, great numbers of kids coming out, truly committed to making an impact in their community, making it a better place to live, work, and raise a family, but we have a packed agenda. There's always some type of activity, some type of program, some type of volunteering, whatever the case might be that we're doing in our community and being involved in so many different student organizations and things on campus. I can confidently say that no other group on campus meets the demand that the coalition meets. We have sticker shock. We have safe prime. We have safe grad. We're partnering with our chiefs. We're presenting inside of the middle schools. Again, no other student organization on campus can meet the demand like the coalition, and I think that is exactly what makes the coalition so special. So that's really impacted me, impacted knowing what it's like to run a group like this, what it's like to organize these types of partnerships and community relations, which is why we're here today. And it's impacted me in a sense of that we can make an impact in our community, no matter how old you are, what you look like, what you're doing, you can make an impact as long as you're committed to showing up and being that change. And I know that I can speak for so many different seniors, but all the students in the coalition when just get finished with their senior breathes a week ago or so, and it seems like every single senior, when they get to give remarks, also said the same thing. And so this truly is an impactful group. I'll actually be going off to study public policy next year at UNC, and the coalition was certainly a part of that decision, certainly a part of how can we use policy, working with all these different stakeholders to truly impact our community. And the coalition has taught me that, it's shown me that, and it's shown that data can back up that that's working.
I think Mr. Clark, you're up next, sir.
One second. I don't want to take too much time on your agenda, but thank you, Devin, so much, and you can see why we asked them to be with us tonight. Just talk about opioids for one second here. So opioid onset and prevention, you don't hear about it anywhere. You'll hear about harm reduction. We'll hear about intervention, reentry treatment. You'll hear about lifelong, healthy living, but nobody will talk about prevention in opioids. And that's where we come in. If you don't mind, yes, go ahead. So I'm at the National Heroin Conference in Atlanta this year, and I'm presenting a poster about youth-led prevention with opioids and how nobody's really doing it. I'm poster number 98 out of 150 in this long row of posters and presentations, and I've been up and down every single row. There's not one state represented in the United States that was doing prevention with opioids and youth-led prevention. So I said to myself, we've got something really special going on here in Fairfield, and I want to make sure we kind of make that loud and clear today that the students that Devin represents and all the hard work that they do, opioids are on our radar, and we know that prescription pain medications have the same compounds as heroin. So when they get off your OxyContin or your Hydrocodeine, you know, whatever it is for a broken bone, you may never get off heroin again. So we're trying to make that connection with the youth out in our community. Here's our positive outcomes, if you don't mind hitting it one more time, Julie. So since 2008, we've reduced underage tobacco use, prescription pain abuse, underage alcohol use, and marijuana use. There should be one more arrow under. Oh, you can go back one more time. And so we've reduced prescription pain medication by 38%. That's 1,387 students who no longer use pain prescriptions without a doctor's approval. Okay? So we're going after that group of students because that leads to a heroin addiction, and that's where all our problems start, and it's really hard to get off of that. You can go ahead and hit it. I just have a couple of slides here. I don't want to go too long for these folks, but I'd like to just talk about community norms for one second. You can hit it one more time. And when a community favors a norm that allows underage drinking, for example, and drug use by youth, the success of your grant-funded prevention programs gets compromised. And what we mean by that is this, we can take all the money in the world, and we can apply it to our youth with prevention programs, but they're going to go back into neighborhoods and homes where that is not the case, where parents aren't disapproving of drug use or alcohol use. And you know, if students don't know that a pain prescription that they're taking is addictive, they don't know that. They just know someone tells them, you can get high on this, let's go ahead and take it. They don't know that, so that's where we come in. That's where we're trying to do our youth-led prevention. But if the community is such that it's not supporting these kinds of efforts, these prevention programs fail. They absolutely fail. A doctor from the National Institute of Health just last year in Washington, DC, kind of shared that information with us from a longitudinal study. So we need the community. That's why we're here. And here's what it comes down to, and this is the last slide. We need community support. Without the community sector, you know, we're out here doing the best we can. You've got students like Devin who've got six, seven years into the coalition who have been educated, but so many peers and other students out there are not hearing the message. We need to, we have a lot of work to do. We need local government support. We've been trained by national trainers on the fact that we have to have local government be a part of our coalition efforts, even if we're just hearing what you're saying and we're hearing what we're saying. And one of my asks today is that we have a representative from the township, maybe attend our virtual meetings once a month for an hour, and just listen in and see where we can work together, where we can partner, where things line up for us. So I'm here to raise awareness about our coalition, and we are in dire straits for financial support. Our federal grant is winding down, and you know, and Scott Clark, I'm going to ask you to come up for a moment. Scott's our president of our coalition. We're really trying to buy other grants and do things like that, but I'm going to tell you, we've been around for 20 years, and we've had an impact on the community. I showed you the numbers. But the bottom line is we've got to keep the operating system running for this coalition. So we are here for an ask, and we're tying it into opioids, and we know there are opioid settlement dollars that are trickling down from the state, and I don't mean to get into anybody's business or anything like that, but we're here to raise a flag to say we're interested to see how we can partner with you on some of these opioid prevention projects. So and I would love to answer questions if you have, but I'm going to ask Scott to come up for one moment. And just about everybody in Fairfield knows Scott, but he's the president of our coalition.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks for letting us come in and speak tonight. We really appreciate it. Two sustainability's we need. Joe mentioned one, which is funding. It's a month-to-month, quarter-to-quarter, year-to-year thing. And Joe is a wonderful director. He speaks, as he said, all around the country. He's good at what he does. He's very knowledgeable. We're very fortunate to have someone like him in Fairfield and Fairfield Township, in our community, to work with these kids. Christina Boicek is our youth advisor. She works with the middle schools. Ever since COVID, mental awareness, health has been a big deal. We used to have, I forget the number, but it was a lot less than I want to mention now, the youth coalition in the middle schools, and we had two, as you probably know, was very low. Between Joe and Christine Boicek and Devin, this wonderful young man, we had 98 sixth, seventh, and eighth graders come to our leadership meeting this year. The parents had to sign a waiver for them to leave school, go to CAC, Community Arts Center, for an all-day event. And we had young people like Devin and some other leaders in the community that sat at these tables with six or eight other students, these sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, that are hearing an all-day seminar about what it is to be a leader in the coalition. And they had some of the seniors that were at those tables, too. So what I also want to urge you to do is go to our Facebook page, Fairfield Prevention Coalition Boosters. Like it, look at it, also visit our website, check that out. But again, the two things that we're asking, funding for the opioids is a big, big deal. We know there's money out there. We're talking to the city as well. We've talked to Jennifer Gross. We've talked to Congressman Davidson. So we've got some support at that level, too, but locally, we need that where we can get it. We're also going to be doing a walk this summer to go to businesses and asking them for some support. They're very supportive with us putting signs and things like that. You may have seen Joe or Devin even in their little silhouettes that are about six foot two. They're both not that tall. Devin's close. But in some of the businesses, banks, and community markets around, that's some of the awareness piece. So those businesses help us with that. We want to get sustainability money from them, too. The last thing I want to ask is to join our monthly Zoom call. It's free. It's easy. You can do it from the comfort of your seat. And you can watch it, listen in, speak, find out a little bit more what it's all about. We had one lady who has been attending that call for quite a while, and we started talking about the farming effects. Farming effects. Farming effects. And she's been on this call, like I said, many, many times. She asked a question this last call about, well, is that something we could take a kid to? Could take students out to a farm and teach them to plant and grow? And it's like, that would be a great idea, but what we're talking about is PH, so pharmaceuticals. So there's still a lot of awareness that need to be brought to the attention to some of the community. But the big piece is just for folks like you to join that monthly call, see what we're all about, share that link with others. We'd love, we've got the school, we've got the city, the township, we've got government, we've got parents, we've got a lot of involvement, but we need more. The more we can get to see those meetings and to hear the information out, there's a lot of resources for reactive, once people, you know, are involved or inactive or involved in drugs, that we can help with that. But we are the prevention. So there's a lot of pieces that we can help with, and as Joe mentioned, we were one of 125 that were at that convention that was only prevention and not reactive. So if we get in front of it, which is why that youth coalition in the middle school is very important, those kids will raise up to be leaders, to teach the other kids as they grow older, to underclassmen as well. So it's a great program. Thank you again for allowing us to come in this evening. Appreciate it. Thank you for speaking with us the other day, Ms. Vanah. I really appreciate your support. And I'll excuse, I'll let Joe, our director, come back up, but thank you again for everything you guys do in the community.
Yeah, so before we leave, can we answer any questions for you? Or do you have any comments that maybe you'd like to share at this time? I think we made it pretty clear what we're trying to do. We left a lot out because of brevity of the agenda, so any questions we can answer for you?
I have another one question as it pertains to your slide. One that talks about suicide is rising and attempts are rising. Earlier this year, we attended a conference where they were saying that it was going down. Do you happen to have any kind of article or something that would support that so that we can go back to these people and say, well, the data shows that actually suicide is rising?
Yeah.
So you could share that with us. That would be very helpful.
Yep. We do a biannual survey every two years, 7,000 students. And I just want to correct you and clarify for you, you're talking about actual suicides. These are students who are thinking about committing suicide. So this data is on the front end of that.
Okay. So these are students that are surveyed that have been asked if they contemplated suicide, not actual attempts and not actual...
Well, there are attempts. That's a different statistic, and I didn't have time to share that with you. We do have that number.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because I was just a little confused about that. I know this is a great program. I'm sure that you've shared the detail that I asked, I'm assuming, with our administrator. And then if you could maybe send a calendar invite for your Zoom meetings to the administrator, and she can send those out to us so that we can get them on our calendars, that would be wonderful.
Great. We'd love to do that.
Okay.
And thanks for asking a question.
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for what you guys do. I have two kids at Fairfield High School.
Thank you.
The second thing is, does the coalition include Butler Tech students that are Fairfield students, or do they have their own, do you know?
Butler Tech does not have their own youth coalition, that I'm aware of. We have invited through administration maybe two years ago, we made the pitch for them to join our efforts and be in on some of our calls, and I don't think there was any follow-up to that. So there's, I would call that an opportunity for us to follow up on. They're certainly welcome.
I just think there are, it's hard for Butler Tech students to get back to the high school sometimes in the afternoon, but there are some students who are in 10 Butler Tech that come back for our meetings, but they have their own, like, project that they have to work on at their school, so it could be hard for them to get to our meeting. But we have had some Butler Tech students attend our meetings at their school. Obviously, like, if there are farming effects going today, that's something that has to be clarified within the penetration. So they're a completely different building. That's a little difficult, but we do have some that pop in now as they're scheduled to meetings.
Okay.
There is involvement. Usually, that's what happens with all of them, they pop in, they're connected.
Thanks, Devin. Hope that helps. Any other questions? Be glad to answer for you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Yeah, there are stories after stories, but one of our big concerns is the mental health aspect, which is not looking good for the future at this point. So thank you so much. And Commissioner Pender, thank you so much for allowing us to come by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the final PUD plan for the miniature golf for the Menards case. What do we have on that?
Good evening. I'll present the staff report briefly. I provided these, the report to you, I think, last week, week before. Just for a reminder, this is case FTZZC 24-3C, final PUD. The applicant is Mr. Dorsey, who's in the audience. So the property is located on Menards Boulevard, just in front of Menards, behind the Dollar Tree. Go ahead. Property is currently zoned B-PUD. We've had a number of final PUDs come through here recently for this development, including the multi-tenant building that houses Big B, then the multi-tenant building that houses Teriyaki Madness and Tropical Smoothie, as well as McDonald's. The applicant's requesting approval for a final PUD plan for a miniature golf facility. A little bit of, we don't really need to get too much into background. I think you guys are all aware of this, PUD. Keep going. So a little bit about it. Mr. Dorsey will go into more detail about this, but the plan does include a 33, 33 putting greens in this miniature golf facility, includes extensive landscaping, props, decor, water features. Mr. Dorsey's traveled around the country looking at different facilities, and he's kind of been pulling inspiration from the best ones in the country. Included in the plans is also a one-story building composed of Duratemp siding. This building's to be used as a ticket office and restrooms. It well exceeds any setback requirements. Also included, there's seating throughout the site, as well as tables and chairs near the ticket booth, where they'll also sell packaged snacks and shaved ice. The one ask of this is the parking lot requirements for the Fairfield Township zoning resolution actually would require 11 additional spots than he's proposing. He's done his research, and he's provided a number of other municipalities and jurisdictions locally that require, that... locally that require, that require well less than what he's requesting. Yeah, you can go ahead. And here's just one of the features in the golf course. He has a lot of pictures, so I don't want to really focus on that, but they're substantial and interesting looking, in a good way. Yeah, pass that. So staff's opinion, that the conditions that were placed on the PUD during the zone change and preliminary PUD process has been addressed in the PUD application that Mr. Dorsey's provided. It's also the opinion of the staff that the plan generally meets the requirements and guidelines outlined in the aesthetic criteria plan. Staff further believes the final PUD plan is consistent with section six fifteen point seven of the Township zoning resolution. It will be, it will promote public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Fairfield Township. Based on findings of fact in the submitted proposal, the staff recommends the trustees approve the final PUD plan with four conditions. If you want to go ahead, oh, well, maybe they're not on there. But the four conditions are, oh, they're there. Okay. All applicable findings and conditions of case FTZZ oh-eight dash five C shall remain in effect and are required to be met. Second one, the applicant does not have signed plans currently, but the applicant will be, the monument sign must conform to the aesthetic criteria plan. Sidewalks will need to be installed on the east side of the, let's see, I think that is east. Yeah, on the east, kind of northeast side of the lot, just to connect with additional sidewalks that would be installed in the future on the vacant lot. And then also, the assistance businesses located in Fairfield Township, all branding, planning documents shall reference Fairfield Township and not any other neighboring and debatably not as good jurisdictions nearby. That concludes.
Any comments, questions?
Commissioner Ganz, you said sidewalks on which side of the property are required?
Sure, yeah, so it's on the Menards Boulevard side. There's a vacant lot that's going to be just north of this. So it'll be, if you're looking at that...
So along the side that has the driveway entrance?
Along the side that has driveway entrance, yes. So it'll just, it'd be kind of a short run to connect to the vacant lot, and then to make future connections, and then provide pedestrian access from that to the building.
Good, thank you.
And that could be striped walking paths and things like that.
And then one more question I have. You mentioned in the conditions that the findings and conditions of the case are shall remain in effect or required to be met, is that including the eleven parking spots?
So the parking spots, that's just general parking guidelines in the zoning resolution.
Okay.
So that's not included in that, no.
So you're not asking those eleven spots to be required to be put in?
No, that's correct. I think that there are plenty of other examples of like businesses that are able to...
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
...need. Yep.
Other questions or comments?
So what's the total number of parking spots?
I think it's...
Fifty-seven, lot sixty-eight.
Right.
I mean, the building itself looks like a temporary structure.
Yeah, he'll go into more detail about that, but yeah, it's, it is a pretty fat structure. It's, the material that's, it's sided with is a...
It's Duratemp, it's about fifty-year warranty on it. These are very expensive materials. It's been built by Weaver Barnes.
Actually, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just that way we can get, we can have that on the record.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, let me just go ahead if you're okay, if you don't mind. I think I'll cover a lot of your questions. Yeah, hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Joe Dorsey, I'm the applicant here. If you indulge me, I just do want to tell you a little bit about myself and my professional background first, to start off with. I'm from Northern Kentucky, from Fort Mitchell, Kentucky. I graduated from UC's DAP program, and I have a bachelor's degree in urban planning. After I graduated, I ended up, long story short, working for about ten years for a very large international real estate development and construction company in Tokyo, Japan. That was, if you recall, back in the early nineties when the Japanese economy was just booming, and they were buying up real estate left or right in California, Hawaii, California. My company had quite a few projects in the United States. So I was part of that wave of investors during that time period. After that, I came back to the United States with my family. I was a real estate agent for about twenty, twenty-five years, working for RE/MAX, mainly. As you can appreciate, I catered to all the Japanese families that worked for Toyota. Ubran Toyota had its North American headquarters here in Erlanger, Kentucky, Delmar, near where I live. But Toyota picked up and left in twenty sixteen. They went hook, line, and sinker down the Playmoor Texas, so I kind of picked up myself and figuratively speaking, transitioned my career over to the lending side of real estate and started working in the mortgage department at Fifth Third. I'll just share with you one of my accomplishments there, was I was the recipient or winner of the President's Circle Award in twenty nineteen at the bank. Not to brag or anything, but that's a big, big deal at Fifth Third, to make that President's Circle. You have to be in the top, the top two in your department, and it's just not based upon production and profit, but you have to have very high customer survey scores as well. Okay? And I was also the runner-up in twenty twenty. So that's just a little bit about my professional background. So I'll go ahead and talk about the site now, if that's okay. And the business side and proposing to bring to your township. As you know, it's at the Menards Out, Menards Center off of Princeton in Delaware. We're going to create the parcel from a lot by a lot split. So I'm going to take the southern two-point-one acres of the Parrot Lot, zero-zero-eight-six. That will leave a remainder lot of one-one-four acres up by Joseph Lane. I've been told by the real estate agent that has that list, has the listing, that that remainder lot's actually under contract right now. But apparently, there's no plans to develop it, it's just being bought by a speculator, I guess you would call him, who thinks it's a good site to invest in and thinks they can flip it for a profit. I like to think my, my plan has something to do with that thinking, but I'm in no hurry to get it, to get it sold. So these are just two photos from the ground. The upper photo shows, if you're approaching off of Princeton, coming down Menards Boulevard, Menards is on the right, Dollar Store is on the left. The lower photo shows the site looking across from Menards Parking Lot. Our driveway access will be directly across the street and aligned with the Menards driveway as well. Aerial photo to give you a better idea of the proportions and shape of the distances that are involved. It's a, it's a big site. It's, like I said, two-point-one-four acres. So if all goes well, by summer of next year, twenty twenty-five, this is what we hope to turn that site into. It's a thirty-three-horse miniature golf course facility. Okay. Just wait a moment, let me gather my thoughts here. Yeah, so if you want, all the civil drawings have been done, all the civil engineering, these are all done by, you're getting a little ahead, if you don't mind, is that moving? Yeah, back up. Back up, please, thank you. Okay. Yeah, all the civil drawings have been done by Klinger's, if you can go back, please. Yeah, the survey's been completed, no particular surprises there. The environmental study was done, it was determined to be low risk, so we're not going to be required to enter phase one done by the bank. Next slide, please. This is the utility plan, we're going to be pulling electric down from Joseph Lane at the corner of Bigby's, where the box is. Electric is across the street on the Menards side of the Boulevard. The sewer is on site, and then the stormwater detention system underneath the parking lot that will channel into the detention pond that's south of us. These have all been approved by, reviewed by Eric Pottinger, the CEO. He had a few comments. Klinger's made a few changes in response to that, but my understanding, this has all been approved at this point from the engineering point of view. So just want to go over it, section by section, a logical manner, because there's a lot to take in, and I just want to describe the physical facilities for you. Starting on the outside, we do have the parking lot, fifty-seven spaces. Here are four tree islands, three handicap spaces. On the south side, there'll be a six-foot tan vinyl privacy fence along the parking lot. And then on the north is, we expect a concrete pad for the dumpster location. And we haven't determined whether it's going to be a traditional fence enclosure. If it's going to be a fence, it's going to be a matching to the tan vinyl fence. Or we might put a garden shed up there, mind your, and if we do do the garden shed, it'll be painted to match the same colors as the ticket office. You'll also notice the gap between the tan vinyl fence for the opening to the ticket office and the brown dash line, I mean, that, that would be like a privacy screen type of fence, and I'll show you a photo next, go ahead to the next one. That's not supposed to be like a, you know, spot-on architectural rendering, but it's a good artistic rendering, what it will look like from the outside as you approach from the sidewalk. So let's go on in, but before I do that, I kind of want to give you the big picture of the design field that we're underlying everything. If I can sum it up in a couple sentences, what we're trying to do is bring the, a little bit of Gatlinburg, a little bit of Burdo Beach and Sarasota to Cincinnati. And one of my friends has those fun adventure golf-type main golf courses, and I'm sure if you're from Cincinnati, you've kind of gone to Gatlinburg or Sarasota, if not, you know, if you're not from Cincinnati. And, you know, in particular, you know, we're going to bring in some of the props and the feeling that the kids just love, you know. But unfortunately, we don't have the go-around weather and the tourist crowd, so we're not going to be able to go to that weather, but we have a couple of nice fun things that I think the kids are going to enjoy. The other idea is, we want to take that, you know, theme idea with the fun stuff, but place it in a very beautiful, high-lancet, garden-like, park-like setting for the adults. So they'll have something to enjoy, and just want to come for the nice surroundings. Okay? So that's for the kids, that's for the adults, made for everyone. Again, I'll let you know, Sean, mind, you can come back. For everyone. Then the third element of our design concept is fun, entertaining greens that we've, a lot of them we've stolen, they're copied from other putting bots, but we liked them, what's bringing them, why we invented them, and so on, and we came up with them. Next slide, please, Jimmy. So just talking about the ABC, talking about the theme, the theme will be the South Pacific Island Adventure, but we have mid-things within there in five areas. So you'll first come in from a ticket office to the beach lagoon area, then you're going to the majestic rivers. And once you have finished the three greens that are within the structure, you're going to the detail, you know, what that is. Usually, with thirty-three holes, you're going to get two courses out of it. So we're actually going to give you three choices. So we'll have a front ten and a back eight, and we'll divide that up into eight, eight, and eight. So you'll have three courses to choose from, rather than two. So when you get to that building, it'll be two-tier adventure. You're going to go to the TT Tribes, the main course, or go through the Wild Jungle course, or do you want to go to the Grand Mouse Garden course? Okay? So that'll give a lot more variety. We help to bring, you know, repeat customers, people curious to know what each course entails. Okay. So I'll go through each area, but I'm going to emphasize the physical plan for you, because I'm sure you want to know what the elements are. If you do, next slide, please, thank you. So when you enter, this is the arena area. Now, if you look at the illustration from the landscape plan, second from the left, you'll be directed to go to your left or right hand of the building. That screen and fence will form a sort of like a courtyard effect to it. It'll be mowing, or slant, mostly shade plants, taking with your scent as you walk around. You'll come around, come up to a rock-up window, you'll pay there. Customers will not be entering the building, except through the bathrooms, but those bathrooms are not internal, they will have exterior entrances over on the front lot with men's and women's restrooms. You know, to start off the theme right away, as you can see, we're going to have four palm trees right in front of the ticket office. There'll also be a pavement patio. We're going to spend some extra bucks to make it a pavement patio. We could, well, concrete's a lot cheaper, but concrete always cracks, you know, it bothers the heck out of me if there's a crack, so I think it was worth the money to do with that that way. It's not really good, the patio, it's, but large enough to have five picnic table units, those are the actual ones. We have wine, we have salmonella and bananas. The other feature, you can't quite see it, but underneath where there's a trio of palm trees, there's a, will be a circular structure, basically either a basing wall for sitting, or it would be actual circular benches. The idea there is simply to get, that's a place to tell the kids, go sit there, you know, behave yourselves, won't buy tickets, you know, and I think they'll appreciate that convenience. The ticket office, that is the actual model that Weaver Barnes, but it's not that small, this is in someone's backyard. But that's what it's going to look like, it's going to be thirty-two, I'll go into more detail on the ticket office on the next slide, I'll be there. But that's the actual colors. I'm thinking of the color that's bare, green, and then another grass, and green, green glen for the trail, and then Sierra glen for the shingles. Go to the next slide, please. So those are the renderings of the ticket office. As I mentioned, this is going to be built by Weaver Barnes, they're located there on Dixie Highway. It is a duratemp material. It comes with a fifty-year warranty, so it will, it's a good material, it'll last a long time. And the gable lands, the upper right land as well, employees will come in, and make things, supplies and equipment through there. And the lower right-hand picture shows the men's and women's restroom entrances on the exterior. Okay? It's thirteen feet, three inches and three-eighths of an inch tall, thirty-two across the front, sixteen feet across the sides, so it's about five hundred and twelve square feet. Okay? Okay, next slide, please. So I'll just take you through each of the sections. Oh, I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, I've hit myself, if you can go back. One more, please. Okay, so the living area also, there will be this pond, that the idea is you'll have a nice feature to look at when you're sitting at the picnic tables. There'll be a fountain in it, at the deepest, it'll be three feet deep, but it will not have straight sides, it's going to be sloping, probably two-to-one or three-to-one slope, so you can't, like, fall into it. If you fall into it, you have to walk into it, and if you fall, you're going to be, you know, up to your elbows maybe initially. know, up to your elbows maybe initially. Okay? But we're going to turn that pond into a lagoon, right, with decor and theme, with more palm trees around it, you know, like half-bell treasure chest, a native canoe pulled up on the sand, maybe some, you know, crab sculptures or something on the sand, things like that. Okay? So we'll make you run around those four holes, and then go to Dixon. Then you'll come to, one more, please. You'll come to the Aztec ruins area. This is the one that Chuck had mentioned before. Just to kind of go over that, that's actually a garden trellis is the skeleton underneath it, okay? And we're going to doctor it up with, actually carved foam. I learned this technique from the people at the Renaissance Festival. They showed me how to do it, got me in contact with the suppliers and things like that. Doctor it up to look like a temple ruins, okay? So have these timbered-down walls effect and things like that. It was thirty-eight and a half feet wide, twenty-four feet goes back to twenty-four feet to the banana, we have a walkway with the firm, which will also house a green. It's ten feet longer than twenty-five feet long for the walkway. Height-wise, the trellis itself will be at the top, it's going to be like ten-foot head cones, ten feet at the top. The parquet lining at the front will be twelve feet high, and then in the middle, we'll have like a wedge-shaped section, just to have like an Aztec carving, that'll be another four feet high, so it's maximum sixteen feet on that. Just for comparison, the Dollar Star is twenty feet, eight inches tall, to give you a reference. So I really like this structure, this idea, because it really personifies or embodies an idea of fun for the kids with a theme, but with the garden element for the adults. So we're going to be planting, you know, some kind of feline vine, Mysteria or Trumpet Vine or something like that. And over several years, it'll look really, really pretty, I think. Okay? Okay, then we'll go to the next section. This is where, after you've completed the first front ten holes, you'll have your choice. If you go to this middle course to finish up your last half of your holes, it's Tiki Tribe course. It'll be hosted by these guys from Tiki Tribe. We'll have an animatronic from China, I think will make a great photo op. Moms or dads will love to get their little kids in front of them. We'll have a few more palm trees. This is an idea we picked up in one of our courses we looked at. This one had built-in misters too, which will be great during those hot August days. It's insane, so, number four. The other main feature would be an animated volcano. I don't have any picture of it, but we made like informal profile studies, just to give ourselves an idea of how big and what proportions we wanted to. As you can see up in my hand, quarrel and standing, we kind of saved it all on that size, in that proportion, fifteen feet across, twelve and a half feet tall, maybe twelve and three-quarters with some bumps. Again, for reference, that'll be lower than the ticket office ceiling, booth line, much, much lower. It's actually much closer to the Dollar Star building, and that thing is twenty-one feet tall, so it'll be much, much lower than that. It will be an animated, we will have a playpen tank inside, melting, making molten lava. I'm joking. All joking aside, it will be animated, we'll have a fountain machine in there, it'll puff out some fog, column of fog, some fake snow for the ash, maybe for the flames. It'll have orange-colored cloth with a fan burning, and it'll be on a timer, we're thinking like every fifteen minutes, I mean, you'll see the fog and the ash coming and the flame.
That sounds remarkable. I really like the way this is going.
Good.
We probably have about maybe five to ten things on the agenda.
Yes, I can go ahead. We'll go to the next one.
Yeah.
This is the Wild Jungle course. The main props here will be animatronic animals from China. We'll go to the next one. Grandma's Garden is going to be a ton part of steroids, basically. This is what we're going to have. We got the jungle theme all covered with everything else, so something different. This is going to be what I'm going to spend a lot of time just enjoying it, you know, with the glaze balls and the windspins and things like that. So those are the three subthemes. As for the second element of the vision, we do have a landscape plan, maybe Dan Frank. That's this one section. I can't tell anything from it. I haven't had time to do diligence this, but I want to very quickly show you the photos. I gave it to Dan to communicate when I went see, and actually, I gave him a set of photos, quite a few from the course that inspired the whole putt-putt in the park concept. It's right up here in Columbus, Ohio, in a suburb called Westerville. They had two courses, that's the first one you see on the left, you want the next slide. Just go through those. You can see, it's a beautiful course. It's a lot more colorful, is the thing. They have annuals and perennials. That was the inspiration for the Grandma's course. This is just the third leg of our concept on the innovator holms. It's called a knockout hole. This compares what I'm proposing to bring to your township to what is existing now in Cincinnati. There's nine existing golf courses in Cincinnati, three down in Kentucky. The two, the one on the right you're probably familiar with, it's down on Dixon, down on Route Four at the corner. That's, that's nice, but no props, no tires, it's a cylinder. It's fine though, people love it, kid does great business. The one in Florence actually has a few props, it's well-done. The others, they're pretty rundown, a lot of them, and the main landscaping feature is frankly just piles of regga rock that they dumped. Okay? So that's it. That's what I proposed to bring to your township. I'm thrilled to contribute into your community and being a part of it. I just want to ask the guys from the booth, have you considered meeting Putt-Putt as one of your activities?
[inaudible]
Finally, well, spring break.
Visit.
Yeah, come back and visit.
Summer.
Okay. What questions can I answer for you?
Questions, comments?
How many employees would you have?
So we're going to be open eight hours a week, so that, we're two people on staff usually, so it'll be like four full-time people. Of course, that's going to be divided up, maybe six part-time jobs, something like that. I'll be there most of the time. It's going to be family owned and operated as well. I'm a very hands-on person. I don't know if I'm detail-oriented, but I sweat the details, let's put it that way.
You might be just a bit detail-oriented.
Yeah, you got to be.
What hours, what do you think the hours will be?
Yeah, I'll be seven days a week, open every morning to ten a.m., except for Sundays eleven. Initially, on the weekends, I'm talking about the summers, not the off-seasons, those are close at eight or nine. We'll close shop at ten, off the course by eleven. I don't want to say it that way, especially if I have a teenager there or two teenagers there, if I can find a responsible adult, I feel uncomfortable with that. In that first season, you can't take a chance, you've got to maximize your revenues and make sure it's on a good footing. If you're successful, I'd like to cut that back to nine o'clock and ten o'clock, but that's the intent.
How many months a year you think?
October first will be the official season to October thirty-first. I've seen some, that's where they can do opportunistic openings. We had another false Cincinnati summer in February, right? And they'll just put out a thing on Facebook, hey, we're open this weekend, looks great. I've seen them done in February. I don't think they'll do that. I want to, you know, this is, not a retirement business, but in a way it is. So, but officially, yeah, go first October thirty-first.
Will we cook in any food? It'll all be prepackaged?
I don't want to get into that, you know? Just refresh things, bottle of water, Hawaiian lettuce, because it ties in with the theme, easy to make. I met a supplier who's actually located in Cincinnati at one of the industry conventions I attended. They said, maybe get you all set up, and they went through the whole package, it's real easy. But, yeah, no cooking inside at all.
So next April first?
No, because we're planning to do the planting in April, in May. I'm having my own on, my business plan, starting from June first. After that, season two, yeah, from April first.
About a year.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll start construction in the fall, maybe August if we're lucky, depending upon how quickly the bank moves, and September, October, something like that. So we do our fall plantings, you know, trees, should be planted in the fall, shrubs, things like that. We'll try to get the putt-putt in, ticket office, so we have a place, we'll bring supplies, a bathroom to use for the workers, people working on the putt-putt. We'll start the greens in September, October, maybe even November, run around, finish up everything in the spring. That's the plan. February as well.
Thank you.
Is the term putt-putt a brand?
It is. We cannot use it in marketing and in my, like, that.
Putt-in-the-park is not going to be?
Major Golf, it has to be called Major Golf.
I think by your one area, it's going to be Grandma's Garden, it's not really putt-putt in the park, right? Is that, do I remember that correctly?
Uh, maybe I'm mixed, that's the theme, so it's going to be a lot of garden decor, but it's going to have holes as well.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not sure if I'm understanding.
I'm just checking to make sure that the term putt-putt is not part of the application if it's a trademark.
It is trademarked, so, yeah, but I'm just using it as a putt-in-the-park as a concept, but it's not in the plan or the, any of the business documents. You know, actually, the business documents, we call it major growth and minerals project. We haven't decided on a name yet, honestly. We might have a contest just for marketing purposes.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have it on our agenda a little later. Okay, our next item, we have the Veterans Memorial update.
Thank you. Today, we spoke with Dell and with Jim from Laser Imaging. The granite is supposed to be delivered by July first, and he said that should give us time to have the installation done by Veterans Day. I know that was one of the comments, and he feels like if we can get all the inscription to him by August, then they can have those installed by July. Dell and I were discussing QR codes, that'll project, they'll start to ramp up, and then we're going to start to meet to discuss the parade and Veterans Day event. So that's all I have right now.
So we, who's going to be working on, what's going to be inscribed on the new granite?
That'll be Chuck, working with me.
Okay. I mean, because I know that we have essentially four panels above where the names and sponsors are going to be, correct?
Yeah, so there's, there should be four sides to it. Yeah, the veterans can be put together some, something preliminary, so it's mostly going to be spots for plaques.
Right, but at the top, there's spots for some sort of artwork or design or?
Yeah.
Logo or whatever.
Yeah.
And so at some point, obviously?
We're going to bring it to you guys for approval. But yeah, we'll hopefully have a few different ideas.
Great.
And Dell has that too, so he'll help figure it, yeah.
So I'm sure that?
That will come to you all three for approval, absolutely.
I just don't want them waiting on us to get that inscription started so that it can get to us by?
Absolutely.
November, okay. Thank you.
Pocket character state, five points.
That I'm more interested, I just wanted to see where the board stood on a possible ribbon cutting that had been discussed. Jeff, I think the weather hasn't cooperated to get seed and straw down.
That's correct. Everything else is pretty much done up there. The parking lot has been paved. I think Mr. Byron was supposed to come out and stripe the parking spots. It just, don't have any time before they land to drive out up there and us to get up there and, you know, grade it all, hydroseated and all that, so, I mean, you could really have the opening whenever. So that's up to you guys.
I think the area is if it needs grass.
I don't know the exact, I'd say probably close to an acre and a half. So, I know we need to do some dirt work inside the fence as well. We talked about possibly planting some shrub, shrub ring in there. So, I could possibly have the shrub ring and stuff done, but I don't know about the hydroseating and all that.
Well, depending on when we want to have the ribbon cutting is whether you have it done or not. If we want it soon, it's not going to be done, but if we want it later, then it could...
Close to the week of June, possibly. Is that okay for you guys, shoot for that?
I've...
I was going to say the grass is not going to be up, so either we brew it or, you know...
I think my initial thoughts was I was hoping that the straw would be down, but, I mean, people are using the park anyway, right? This was just an official grand opening type of thing, right?
Right, correct.
And just, my opinion, aesthetically, that the straw was down and we're advertising on social media that this new park is open and there's dirt everywhere, and those pictures don't go away on social media, I would rather wait until the straw's down, and whether the grass is growing or not is fine, but you got a mud pile out there, we're having an opening in the spring, and it could be raining that morning, and there's kids with mud all over them. Come to our park, I don't think that screams, we're ready.
That's not me, we're ready, but yeah.
I just think that, in my opinion, I'm one of three, so in my opinion, I think we should wait until you have ample time to do it right.
Okay.
Don't rush to get it done.
Okay.
If the park is open and kids are using it, that's amazing. But I think for, for, no, for just propaganda reasons, I think we should wait until there's saw, saw, straw and seed down, so that, at least aesthetically, when we go to open it, it looks brand-new, fresh, let's go play there, as opposed to, wow, all the grass is already worn down and there's mud everywhere.
Yeah, I think the next meeting is what, June eighteenth? We could give you more of a better idea then. I personally hope to have all of it installed by then.
Well, I don't think we have to wait for the next meeting. I mean, I think if you are able to?
Communicate.
Give Mrs. Von der Hare a date, say, hey, look, next Tuesday, we're going to be putting the straw down, whatever that next Tuesday is.
Right.
Can you ask the board if we can have a grand opening? And she could say, hey, we're going to try to do the ribbon cutting on Saturday, May, whatever, the last Saturday in May, or the first Saturday in June, we're going to have this grand opening, does that work for you all? And we can each individually respond back to her.
That's right.
Yeah, we could be there. I mean, it's not really official business, it's just, can you be at a ribbon cutting?
Communicate, that's not, it's fine.
Is that legally, like, we're not?
Just, you can do that.
Okay.
Unless we don't load anything.
No, we're not loading, just, hey, can you bring your scissors?
Don't put your scissors, but you can cut a ribbon, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think that's great, I just would rather wait.
What's the cost just to put that seed in?
I don't have, I'm not good, I'm not finding, we did all the supply stuff, moved down, fourteen, two different sized machines, so, a lot of this is going to depend on who better does it, they have as well. They need to try to have a little snow, it's better than the law, they have on the ground. I just have to try to play this for weatherman, say, okay, we get it, we're going to bring it.
We want it to rain after it's down, but, that's another, well, that's another problem. I mean, you put the seed down, put the straw down, and how is it, how is it watered? Fire department?
Fire hose testing. Well, you did a great job of playing with weatherman during the winter, we didn't have any snow events, so.
Well, and I, you know, an acre, that's a, that's a pretty big area, but if it would make a difference to the photos and getting people from the parking lot to the, to the playground, we could do some saw along the way to get those grass areas, not straw, something like that, and you can put that down real quick. And then, of course, I wouldn't want to saw an acre. saw a, an acre.
I just see hard to see it all.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, and you still got the other problem, what happens if it doesn't grow? You could say, um, the saw's not ordered, but again, an acre plus, what, what, what does it cost us to get somebody else to go in there and do it? To seed and straw? I mean, you know, somebody, that's all they do. Somebody, I mean, that might be quicker or not.
Well, I say, by the time he gets bids and he brings it back to the next trustee meeting to have it done, we might already have the ribbon cutting.
Yeah, I mean, same, you're gonna hold for the contract and then for the others.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna do it Memorial Day weekend.
No, but no pressure.
In the first weekend of June, I'm not available. We're gonna do a Saturday, so that gives you.
I'm not married to the weekend either. I think.
Anytime.
During the week as well. Um, I, I prefer to, like, employees will come in for the ribbon cutting, so I'm not opposed to doing it during business hours when employees would be working. So I, Saturdays are fine, but I also, I'm open to during the week too.
You know, also, we, I've talked with Chuck, uh, this Brown's woman, maybe, uh, agents that have parking lot, kind of waiting on the end to come back and strike the parking lot. He's supposed to be yesterday, and we'll get the city, so we have all that taken care of as well.
Thank you.
All right. Pickleball?
So we are not much farther than what we had last month. Companies must be saying, busy, because we're not getting very quick response. We've had luck with two, and the one that has been most responsive is, uh, the game changer company that is in Sourcewell, which is a consortium, and they come in under Sourcewell. Uh, it's like a consortium pricing. They come, usually come under Sourcewell, so, uh, based on, and I'm not an attorney, but I did receive legal advice from your, uh, from Larry, that, um, that would be okay, and we wouldn't have to bid.
Yes, I saw that opinion.
So, okay, okay. So I do, I do have a couple of maps as far as locations, if the board wants to proceed with the pickleball. So we had two options here, and again, we were keeping in mind sound, because the sound is so different than tennis, it'll affect residents and lighting, and then if there's certain hours. So the location, we did consider surrounding neighborhoods, and then, um, also the topography, and in the other park especially, how, how wet the land is. So this is the Heroes Road Park. Those are two options there that were discussed. And let me see if I can find the other one. And this is the other, so both, both, we've had the option of going right along the basketball court, and then option two, you know, you have the walkability with the path. You're, you're still, I think, okay, it does become, it, as you proceed to the right, becomes more and more marshy, and hence the problem with our dog park. So those are two different options at both parks. I don't know if you want them, you want two in each park, you wanna do one park, you want more information, you're comfortable with game changer in Sourcewell, so I'm just looking for direction there.
Sure.
Is there room, not that this is ideal, but is there room on the other side of the parking lot from the police station? Or do we have that property, or is that off of our property? It says to be the bottom of the screen.
So, right here?
That's church property?
Right.
No, I'm sorry, the other side of the, the driveway, like, runs right into it. That's church property?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's church, that's not ours.
So each one of those options is two courts inside of the option?
Correct.
Okay. I think the idea of getting it as far away from houses as possible would be my first choice. Um, so to me, it would be option two on both of them, but is option one because of the, the way the land is laid out, and it'd be less excavating?
At Heroes Road, both, yeah, we, we moved, because if you went farther, if you went farther behind a tennis court, then the topography dropped. So that's where we pulled, we pulled it back behind a basketball court at those parks for that reason.
I'm sorry, could you go back to the first map, please?
Well, that, that shows a cost and, and example, but, um, I can't go back. I just have to, I have an email again, I apologize.
So while she's looking for that, just a couple of things I think we need to keep in mind is, um, pickleball is popular now. I don't know what kind of popularity it's gonna come down the road. So is this a trend? Is this a long-term thing? I don't know, but I just think it's something we need to keep in mind that, you know, is it this, is it going to have the longevity as the sport was otherwise? So I'm not saying that's a deal breaker, deal kicker, one way or the other, but it's just something I think we need to keep in mind. Um.
Yeah, and to, I, I could answer that. Um, whether it's popular or not, um, I know it's been popular for a couple of decades at least in Middletown. I know they've been playing it for at least a couple of decades. Um, I know it's a trend, it's trending now. Uh, I think population are living longer. Um, but also, I think there's pickleball courts, if the sport were to go away, we have nice flat surfaces that we could put one tennis court in it, maybe, or we can make it into another fenced-in basketball court. I think there's things we could turn it into. Um, or we can make it, like, if it's an option two, we can make it another place for, um, families to go in and have young children fenced in area. Or, um, we could turn it into a picnic area, uh, put picnic tables out there. Um, I think there's things that we could use them for, but I have a feeling it's gonna be around a while. It's an expensive game to play, that appeals to all kinds of masses and social, economical levels. Uh, families are playing it, all ages are playing it, and, uh, I just think I would, I would love to have that opportunity for families and I, uh, to have those options. And many people have reached out to me about adding pickleball, um, 'cause they don't really like driving over to Westchester, or they wanna get into our tennis court areas, but the nets are higher, uh, so it's a little different game. Um, and if anyone's ever been over to Kings Island to watch the Professional Pickleballer Association, or whatever it's called, it's, it's pretty crazy. Um, I think it's on ESPN 8, the Ocho, maybe? No, but, um, I, I just think it's gonna be around for a while, and we're not building buildings that would be sitting empty if a trend would end. It would be open play areas that we could then add, get another tennis court or another basketball court, or maybe a high lie court, I don't know, whatever would fit into that area. Beach volleyball, put some sand in there. So, and I, I don't know where the board stands on this, how much further we want staff to go with this. Um, do we wanna make a decision? Do you want more information? Um, like, if we were to approve this, how long would it take to be put in? You know, when's their timeline to start building it?
That, I know, he said they just finished up a large project, and they actually sent pictures of it, so he was pretty willing to go if chosen, so, yeah, I don't know. And I think he said it takes six to eight weeks to install, but I, I would have to follow back up on that.
I mean, our tennis courts are not lit now, right? 'Cause park closes at dark.
They are not.
So we don't really need lighting, unless we're waiting for the next eclipse to come. We want people to play during eclipse.
Yeah, the higher the fence, the more it, it takes care of sound concern.
Yeah. Trustee McElveen, opinions?
I'd, I'd like to go to the other park and go ahead and, and, and put, uh, either one or two right along the tennis court, or we could use the fence that's already there and, uh, put that in as quick as we could and see what kind of response we get. I, I don't, I don't know that I wanna, I think we need to think about if we're gonna build something here on this, this location. And I can't really tell whether those are drawn to scale or not, but it, pickleball is a smaller court, right?
Yeah, that's correct. But there, those are, those are approximately sixty foot by a hundred and twenty foot, and that's the size, that's right, one quarter, two courts on one playing surface.
Playing on the sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, do that.
So can we go to the other park map, please?
Maybe if we have to move part of the walking path. I thought if we use the, put it beside the tennis court, we've already got one side of fence up.
So the one issue that, with that is potential distance from the houses and the sound.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same as, as what's there now. The biggest noise over there is the basketball court, and that's the people who, uh, doing their Michael Jordan, that's right, so.
So.
So if we could, I don't know, maybe it could go between the basketball court and the tennis courts.
There's trainees in there, there's trainees in there.
Yeah, we might do that.
I would not be in favor, Trustee McElveen, of moving it next to the tennis courts, because of the, the farther away from houses, the better, because of the, the tone or the pitch of the ball and racket, um, travels far. And what we've heard from various municipalities that have put them in is that the closer the houses they are, the more disruptive to, um, life in those houses are. So further we can get away from houses, the better. Um, I'm not sure how much fencing is, but I would rather it be further away than us have to then deal with the residents complaining constantly about the sound is too close to their house, and they can't enjoy a Sunday afternoon on their back patio. And then I think you don't, you're not, if it's an option two, you're not moving the, uh, walking path at all, uh, unless you were asking for it to be spun ninety degrees and put up against the tennis court.
Well, I was just trying to think of a way to trim off some of the money, having the fence already there. But you don't need as high a fence for pickleball, what you do for, for tennis. So again, if we, if we stayed inside the walking path there, I, I don't know, I was a little concerned about disturbing that open area, although I'm not sure exactly what we're using it for. Nothing, you know, written down about it, but the open areas, you know, once we carved into that, it's gone, so we were out there trying to pick up whatever kind of games.
I kind of agree with that, because I've seen kids over there practicing soccer on those fields, and, um, you know, I don't know if they still do that with that over there, but I think having that open area for soccer and, and things. Um, I do like the idea of putting in one here and see how it goes. The question I have is, is there any way that the vendor can give us some sound data between those two locations? I don't know.
Well, to address the concern that you have, Mr. Brody, I guess we could, you know, we could tie it next to the basketball court.
That makes it closer to the people on Bonneville.
I'm, I'm just curious, like, what the, what the sound range would be? I don't know if there's any data that they have, or, um, distances, because, and I'm curious what the distance from option one to that house is, and then the distance from option two to those other houses.
So all, all the black, all the black lines on the map represent two hundred feet.
Okay.
That's, that's the minimum of what I would recommend. I, I mean, it'd be ideal if it could be double that.
What about some kind of screening, um, natural screening or something between the basketball court, even now, the basketball court, we, we don't have any bushes or anything in there, do you? Is that just a drainage ditch?
That is a question, right?
You know, anything we could put in there to, to address the sound coming from there now. Um, with something like that, it could help with some of the sound.
I would take the option number two and flip it to where then you have your access, you, you can get to it right off of that walking path, right there by that shelter. This is over the Schaefer's Park. That would be my suggestion.
Leaving it up in that corner where it's at, just turning the other direction.
Or bring it down this way some, I mean, like Chuck said, the black lines indicate the two hundred, whatever, feet.
Two hundred feet.
You could bring it this way, 'cause you have some room to play, it looks like.
I, I would like to also look into what direction the sun would be setting and.
So you'd.
Wouldn't be a player's eyes and things like that.
You want it to be this, the, the courts to be north-south.
It should be north-south.
But that's, that's showing just the opposite of that now, right?
You can, you can, you can, you can double the courts this way on a longer layout, or you can have them like this, if it's, depends on how it's oriented.
How loud are they? Sixty?
The playable space, you want them to be at sixty and then, yeah, so these rectangles are sixty feet.
Sixty-five.
Yeah, sixty, sixty-four is recommended, but, yeah.
So they do have to face north and south, and option two.
Well, as far as Bonneville, I am okay with either location. Looks like your, both locations are pretty much at least two hundred feet from all, most residents, other than, like, looks like one.
And these, if these are just rectangles right now, we'll, once we get a general location squared away, we'll, you know, move into a more appropriate spot.
And that's four courts there in that picture, right?
No, that's two.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
This is one of the, the Williams, their, uh, court that they just finished, so he's sent over this rendering.
I like option one better, but I don't want it to be at the expense of the, the sound level for the homeowners over there. So maybe there is some sort of, like, screening or fencing or?
I'd recommend screening on the fencing, no matter where we put it.
Just like they're showing there. Well, we could, we could put them back to back instead of side by side.
Right.
I know it's the same. I, I bet you could give out a little less room, because then you don't need all that extra space in, in between them.
You'd have to have fencing between the two courts, but, yeah.
Well, just like we have now, instead of running in a square, it'd be a long rectangle with a little fence in between. Wouldn't that be huge, but?
I, I mean, I think it should be the same height fence between the two courts.
Four feet.
If you're going back to back, instead of side to side.
Then we wouldn't need as much room in the middle there, right? That would, that would make it a smaller area for the whole thing. If you stack them.
You asking me?
I'm talking to anybody. You know, you, you got two courts there, and you're allowed some room in between, so.
I, I don't know to that level, as far as spacing.
I bet you could.
They're just giving us.
Stack them instead of.
They're giving us general measurements for very preliminary training. Yeah, I don't know.
You're just gonna have length versus width. I mean, it's just, we'd have to talk to them about.
Well, you got that extra space in between, you wouldn't need that much. That would make it a little less. And then you could pull it back in the, at the Schaefer's Park, you could pull down and over a little bit to get, make sure we're outside the two hundred feet. Pull it down into the, to, in that picture, it looks like southeast, something like that, to get it, and not have to disturb the walking path, but be able to get, get to it off of it. off of there.
All good options.
I am in favor, and it sounds like the minority, of putting courts in at both parks. The reason being is because I think we're going to get a little bit of discount by putting two parks in, two sets in instead of one, because I can do it at the same time. And B, I don't know how much more is going to be if we decide to do this two years from now and we wait. I have been trying to work on a construction project at my house. Well, not my house, my father's house. And for two bedrooms, $45,000, no plumbing. And so costs are just going to keep skyrocketing. So it's in my opinion that if we're going to eventually put it in our featured park, I think we should do it when we're putting it in this park as well. I think there's lots of residents that come to both parks. I think it gives parents an option to do something while their children are at that amazing new park that is in the Hero's Park that the children will be playing and they can be right next door playing pickleball. That's just my opinion. But whatever the role of board is, is fine. I'm just, I'm glad that we're at least discussing having a pickleball court in Fearful Township.
Well, I think... You have two courts, Chuck.
I'm sorry, two courts. But for one, it's one location. And I think, to me, we have an amazing veterans memorial that these pickleball players could be walking through. Some of them maybe have even been veterans, walking through the veterans memorial to go to a pickleball court. I mean, the... That new club in Westchester, what a pickle lodge, has more than a dozen courts and it's hard to get in there to get playing time. So I would think that easily we could fill four pickleball courts on a weekend for a township our size. And I'm okay with any location that is decided as far as in the park, inside each park. Either option. I do agree with Mr. McEveen. I think we should let the developer tell us, hey, does it make more sense to do them back to back or side to side? What's more cost efficient? Because also when they are side by side, then the pickleball will also go onto the other court if you don't have a short fence separating them. A short fence is not that expensive to put in between them. So I guess we need to give some direction to our staff. Are you asking them to do more research from the installer about what it would cost to have one put in as opposed to two? And what it would cost for it to be back to back as opposed to side by side and then come back in June with those recommendations? And we can move forward? Is that what the role of board is?
We can do that.
Sure.
That $109,000, is that for two courts or four courts?
That's for the, well, four total, two at each. 109.
All in with fencing and everything.
Let me pull it up.
I think we need to get a real estimate from both companies if we can, putting two courts in each park. Give a discount, maybe we can give a discount to do two this year and two next year.
So it looks like there are options. So we have to go through line by line and make sure options don't... Okay, pressure washing could add $1,000, so... So there are different options, like menus. You can take certain things off. So we would almost have to go through and we could either talk to experts and bring our recommendations to you with that total cost. We could, I could send this to you and you could all review the options, whatever would make it easiest for you.
I would like to see this. If you could send it to the trustees, I think that would be great for us to look at. And then also do more research on what it would be for those things that we just talked about. Two courts versus four courts.
I have it down, so no problem. And then side by side or back to back?
Right.
Start date, construction time, completion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, website changes and suggestions.
So with the website, we are currently working with Budget Web Works and making some changes in the hopes that it'll be more user-friendly, that things will be more visible. It's like tweaking things where there are multiple places or instead of on the bottom of the page, on the top of the page, where the picture is scrolling through. I think I'm able to administer and do this is just add events and flyers so those things really pop out and are more of a focal point. We are doing a fillable online application, which we haven't had, and I just asked them to add a disclaimer because we're equal opportunity, drug and alcohol free. So I was just wondering if the board would mind if there's any ideas. Trustee Burden has given some great ideas, but if you would all want to, you know, just give us some thought, I would love feedback if you have any. If you want to email me anything you see or you want changed, that would be great, be helpful.
So any comments on the website? Please forward to Administrator Van der Hoorn.
Is it possible to see how many people use the website?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know if it's something I can find, but I can certainly ask. Budget Web Works, I'll try to find it. If I can't see it, I'll see what I can find out.
And Mrs. Van der Hoorn, do you have a time deadline for when you would like suggestions to come your way so that you can start reaching them and have that information available next meeting?
My next meeting would be fine. We just kickstarted the process, so they're, right now, they're in development. Works are really happy. If within the next two weeks would be ideal. And then I could come back with a full update next month, but if two weeks doesn't sound reasonable.
Okay, who's to say tomorrow to get information to you that we would like to see on the website? And then feel open to more ideas by the next meeting so that you can update us.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, next item, the September car show and concert.
So I don't have a lot to add to that. I believe the email that I sent covered most of the current items. We did have another meeting. Jason Agustin from the fire department has been leading a lot of the charge with the car show. The thing that I really love about our team is that with any of these events, I found that if I pull in the experts and leave, say, parking and logistics to police and fire, they're looking at safety and we have traffic patterns and they, you know, everybody's working together in concert. But I love that this year they brought the EMA in. And the EMA is able to bring a whole other component. They pull everything together that we have. The Board of Health has all our food truck information, they're vetting that. So the EMA has capacity, we don't. They can bring signage, larger signage, they will track the weather. So I just, I really love that the team took the initiative to pull. So kudos to fire, police. So I mean, they just, they've all just been wonderful as we collaborate, but that's all I have right now. We're still working on sponsors, about to send out sponsor letters to all our businesses, key residents. So if you hear of any sponsorship opportunities, please send them my way. That's all I have unless there's questions.
And do you have a budget amount for this?
No, no. And I would love that the board, once that on the next agenda, wants to give me that now, I'd welcome that direction.
Do you don't have a dollar amount what we're going to spend?
No, no. And last year, things, they almost took on a life of their own. As people got more excited, it was very organic. So this year, we have a better idea of what to expect and how much, you know, numbers and how much food we need and things like that. So I can... My goal was to try to get as much sponsorship money to cover it as possible. But the closer we could do to break even, the better, in my opinion. So I'm still working on that. But if you want to, really, at the role of the board is what, you know, how I act.
I would like to get a cost estimate for what this looks like.
Okay.
I agree with that. I think a cost estimate would be nice and maybe set a budget for various things like, well, advertising, you know, stage, staging, police duty, things like that. And then if it gets to where it's larger than we expected and we need to go past that, that's, I think, that's when the sponsorship money kicks in, to try to cover some of those expenses. But I think if we find out what the expense was last year, okay, here's how much it was last year. We anticipate it being this much larger or this much smaller this year. So I think the budget should be this. At least we have an idea what that number would be.
Definitely anticipate if the weather cooperates, it will be much larger. I will pull these numbers together. Another nice part is the IAFF. They are handling certain parts of the cost, especially with the car show, 100%. So I will also get those numbers and that information, so you see the breakdown on that.
They're buying the trophies and they're going to accept the money to get in. Are they going to make money?
Last year, they did.
And what was the purpose of that money they raised? What did they do with it?
I can't answer that. You might know. Okay, but I'm not in the union, I don't know. I didn't ask that question.
You know, I had this concern last year. We're spending township resources, and that would be my next question here. You know, what's the number one benefit? Is this a community event or just a fundraiser to help the union raise money? And who's tracking what and where? You know, if it makes money, where's that going? And I think that should be clear for anybody that could look at it and say, okay, this is how much the township has spent and this is how much the union pocketed. I understand there was all volunteers last year and that's awesome. But if we're meeting during, on the clock during the day, that's not what I call volunteers. So again, I think all that needs to be laid out and the more information we have about it, the better. And the last thing I would say is, is how many beer trucks are we going to have? Who's signing that application? If we're going to do beer, you guys already know, I'm not in favor of it. That's just where I'm at, so.
Yeah, to my understanding, it is a... Well, the concert was more of a community event. The car show was more of a sidebar, but the main attraction was the concert, it's a community event. At that point, the fundraising for the car show was over because those cars left. And when they left, they made room for the concert, which was the community event. So I, to Mr. McEveen's point, is if the car show requires extra detail, police, fire, what have you, that might have to be considered into... And correct me if I'm wrong, Trustee McEveen, I think that might need to be factored into the sale, the fundraising aspect of it. So now, if the car show is considered a community event, then that's where the discussion has to be had. Well, who's then paying for the extra police detail and what have you? The extra, if there's, the public works has to be there for moving things around or what have you. And if they're being paid to be there, is that township money being spent or is that fundraiser money being spent? So I think that's the work done, that's what I want, right? Okay, I just want to make sure that you were clear on what we're asking.
Absolutely understand, and I'll even look at last year, pull those things together, not a problem.
Obviously, people that come to the car show are also part of the state for the concert. So there's going to be maybe some gray areas, but it's at least what have a discussion to what those numbers might look like.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Anything further on that topic? All right, what about our June meeting date? We've had some discussion with that in previous meetings. What does...
We sort of talked about the 18th.
Yes.
I think we had a tentative to at least schedule for that, is that?
That works for me at this point, and I appreciate the extra time to work out the summer schedule.
Okay.
I don't know if it's still good for both of you or not.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Do the 18th.
Yeah.
If we have business with the CIC, yes. If we don't, I don't know if they've got to meet for no reason.
Are we required to meet quarterly?
I have to look at the bylaws, I think. By the bylaws, I thought we had to have these one...
I do believe you have to meet quarterly.
That's what I thought, by the bylaws.
Even if you don't have business with it?
I think you have to meet once a quarter.
At least look over the finances, make sure that the books are right.
We've been in violation every year.
I don't, yeah, I don't think that we've been doing it, but I do think we went through the bylaws at the beginning of this year and we're trying to, you know, shore up with that, so that would be my...
Let's see, who's running that for work?
Yeah, let's just make sure that we do meet the CIC. Hey, if we find out that we're not doing something correctly, we just correct it and we start doing it correctly.
You're pleased, Charlie.
No one's going to prison.
So we will go ahead if that's okay, notice the June 18th meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, our insurance update, please.
So everything's been proceeding. Kudos to fire and police who 100% met the goal on Form Fire. You all, to turn that around that quickly, it's great. We have a couple outstanding. I don't know, with all three trustees on, I will need you to complete that before I can turn that in. So I just received a report today, but waiting on a few of... The Form Fire should be completed and then we will start to send that out to underwriting and I should have a report for you on figures and, you know, we'll have to meet and...
And I know that I have not done that yet, so I do apologize, so I will make sure...
No apologies, no apologies.
Is Maun in there?
I didn't look at the report today.
I hope it's in there.
If you say you did, then I believe you.
I'll say you did or not.
Don't need to apologize, and if there's any issue, I'm happy to help.
Okay, no problem, I'll take care of it.
Well, this health insurance discussion, it's going to be ongoing. Is there any consideration for functional doctors anywhere included in any of the conversations at this point?
What is a functional doctor? That's new for me.
It's something different than what most of us do.
Oh, I don't know, I could find out.
Are you talking about like the kind of doctor where you would pay like a subscription or like a...
Kind of doctor that wouldn't just be, wouldn't open the book and say, well, if you've got these subscriptions, we're going to give you this.
Oh, like more holistic, holistic, okay. I will find out. I know they're becoming more popular.
Some recharge subscriptions, but what I've seen from a couple people who have understand are doing it this way, the results are going to help things.
I've heard that as well.
I don't know if that's something we can incorporate with companies in the property or...
Absolutely.
I think that's a place where we ought to have a conversation about what we make of that.
Understood, okay, not a problem. I know those, yes, definitely raising in popularity with a lot of success, so I will check that out. And that's all I had.
The thing that I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank our department heads for their strong participation in the Go 365 program for all of these years because it has put the township in a more competitive bidding position for our book of business, and that is because of our success with that program. So I did sit in on the broker meeting and they did talk about how we have a little bit of preferred status for being a book of business to go to our company.
We were the number one company for Go 365. Our agent said she had to look three times to see, and we brought the most money... Our agent said she had to look three times to see, and we brought the most money back. She said we were the number one top user, brought back the top amount of money, and she was just shocked because of our size. But again, that's kudos. We, one, I didn't let up, and two, every department had worked with us and didn't let up, so the buy-in was tremendous.
Thank you. It mattered. Okay. Does, do we have any, anything further? Any other items, trustees? Okay. Has anybody signed in? All right. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Fairfield Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please note that this time has been set aside from the board's listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to three minutes each. We have one person who has signed in. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Maya T. Nungu, 1891 Howard Street. I just wanted to come for, originally for one thing, but now I've been here for a little minute and I have a few things I want to add. But first things first, about the pocket, um, pocket park at five grades, the kids would like a basketball court. So they requested I come and let you know that they would like a basketball court. If in our possibility, please, please, please get someone to go to the court. So that's why I came originally. I have a few concerns on some of the things I heard today. I'd like to talk with you, or not talk with you, just mention, the phrase "ask" that was used in your presentation, and I'm a little concerned about the appropriation of that wording, and that was always the one to say, I thought. So, of course, I, um, thanks for keeping up with the, Julie, thanks for keeping up with the calendar so I know what's going on, because I missed a couple meetings, because I didn't pay attention to the calendar as cool, so it's nice to see that things are to date on. Another thing about the park is maybe adding some native plants or trees, maybe should we do some native, um, some of that, I don't know what to say there. And then, and then the function of medicine, there's just someone who was like, you know, it's hard, we're all around and have all those things to navigate your medicine before they go and prescribe you whatever it is. Okay. That's all. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to committee reports. TID, trustee McAfee.
I'm the TID met this week and we're very busy. We've got a whole list up and I'm hoping that you guys are all getting to the finished and see all that, all the different projects we have going. We're looking to entertain, again, continue to move forward, working hard on that. Wood Hamilton Crossing, the original documentation they sent out that the city of Fairfield was going to help them refine, but not, they just confirmed that they were looking for a three-way split on the east end part of that, and I questioned the director on what all that meant when the course was thoroughly on. First, I'd say that they're not going to ask for a letter now, they're going to wait for a year before they send those applications. But also, and he emphasized what I was saying, was that, you know, we're interested in part of the more purchasing road, but, you know, it needs the original dollar now and it needs to solve our problems. It's a road race mix. So more information will come on that. Again, the first part of the North Angleton Crossing, what's going to happen, it's going to be the roundabout on the other side. They're talking two years, maybe breaking ground if you do the mark with that map, but they're, you know, we're all pushing for that. Semple Road Crossing, that's, again, moving along, they've already selected a consultant to start some of the work on it. I got a hot fire train there the other, the other day, and do I have to turn around or do I wait? Hamilton Road, you already know, is closed for what, five and a half more months, and that's, that's one of the projects. If you try to go from five to four to five points, you've got to go all the way around. But it's going, I've ridden down there and looked at what they're doing, it's going to be a whole lot different than what's going to happen. It's all good. It would be an alternative route when they get back to the, the other side. That's all I have. Any questions?
All right. Quite a bit on EMA. We met this afternoon. There were five activations in the last few months. Some impact, one of them was for solar, or I'm sorry, for the solar eclipse, so they did activate for that. There were very minor impacts to that, and this is kind of interesting, but the EMA, someone reached out to them from OSU to say, well, you know, they contrasted what happened in Kentucky and what happened here, because there were impacts, but it wasn't anything near like what the last solar eclipse was. So OSU is actually going to be doing a write-up on this, and they think that a lot of it was because there were so many pre-meetings, a lot of people had their eyes on this and were thinking about it in advance of it happening, so we were ready, we were prepared for it. So that's, that's a good thing, but there will be an article that comes out on that. Another one of the activations happened on May 7th, of course, with the tornadoes. There ended up being a total of three. One of them touched down over in Indiana and then came across. Then there was the one that came down to McGonigal and then ended up in Middletown. They think that that's, that was probably the same cell that produced both of those two tornadoes. There were some straight line winds, but the, the EMA deployed on that both during the event and then the next day to take a look at that. There was a few other things. I'll keep those high level as far as some operational things. The rape system is upgraded. They have been doing, this is interesting, they did some outreach with Lakota. You might be aware of this, but they're getting, they got with the Edge Teen Center, and they met with them and talked about careers in first responders. So I thought that was really interesting. They had one thing called Fridays Food Trucks and Futures at Lakota where they really brought in food trucks, and then they talked about different things, and I thought that might be, I thought that was a really cool thing that we might want to think about on. If it works, I just thought it was a rather interesting best process, best practice on that. This, what I'm going to pass out to you now, there has been talk for quite some time on funding for the EMA. I'm going to take one of those. We've been discussing this at our meeting for some time. I'll give you a second to look at that. There have been no increases to EMA funding since about 2010, 2011, that timeframe. And in that time, clearly costs have gone up. Okay? Labor cost, equipment cost, all of those things tend to go up. So the first, and what I want you to look at first is this spreadsheet. The first column is what we have, it's our 2024 per capita. Again, that's the same one that hasn't been changed since the 2010, 2011 timeframe. There is talk of raising that per capita price. You can see the different calculations here. There's one at 50 cents, one at 55 cents, one at a 60 cent assessment. This is money that would be billed to Fairfield Township that we would then cover. So if you look at the bottom there, you can see that we're currently contributing, I'm sorry, go to the Fairfield Township, we're contributing about $8,800. If we, that moves up to the 50 cent per capita. You can see it's a little over 11, 55, that puts us a little over 12, 60 cents, that puts us over a little 13. And then you can see the bottom numbers that give you the entire thing. And as I mentioned, if you, the, the costs have increased. If you go back to the chart that looks like this, you can see that they've adjusted this, the EMA per capita versus inflation on that bar chart. So in order to keep current with the 39 cents, the 52 cent is the most accurate number that would take us to meet the same earlier numbers as to what we have now. So this will most likely be coming up at a future EMA meeting. We've been asked to go back and talk to our appropriate staffs just to talk this through, but just like everything else, it's looking like things are going to go up in price. And the thing that I want us to all keep in mind is that we do work very collaboratively with the EMA. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about specifically working and collaborating with the EMA. So we do get value from them. Many of you probably remember that train car at Rentshler and the oil leak that we had a number of years ago, and they were integral in helping us get that cleaned up. But there's, we do get value from the EMA. I don't think that these numbers, it's, it's definitely an increase, but I don't think it's, it's not an outlandish increase. So that will be coming up in a future thing. If, I don't know if there's any thoughts or comments on that from the board about your thoughts on those numbers. I will tell you too, that the EMA does actively pursue grants and alternate funding from many, many agencies. So it isn't just, this is not the total operating cost, but they, and they, they do actively, I'm sure Chief Burden, you can expound upon that, that they definitely do go out to get other funding. Any questions or comments on that? Any thoughts on what the?
According to this chart, the 2024, we're at .52 with inflation, so the .5 doesn't even get you there, the 50 cents per capita, if we're already at 52.
Well, I can certainly forward that information onto the EMA and let them, and share that concern with them.
Was this something that you generated, or they gave this to you?
No, I did not generate that. This came from the EMA. All of the documents that are in front of you are things that were distributed at the EMA meeting today. So if you have any direct comments or feedback on that, I'm, I'm happy to, to share that back with Director Boland.
I'd be in support of whatever he thinks we should do. I mean, it's extremely valuable to the township and the county, so it seems reasonable even if we do those 60 cents.
Maybe we can save some money on printer ink if he doesn't do that black box. That's minor. Now, I agree with trustee McAfee. I think it's a valuable asset that we should try and consider increasing our support. Is that something that, if the EMA requests from us, or because right now, every jurisdiction is the same rate? So would they then just ask for the same rate from every jurisdiction? Or would each jurisdiction vote in a certain rate?
We will be meeting at the, this will come up at a future EMA meeting, and we will most likely, the EMA board will have discussions over whether or not we think the 50, the 55, or the 60 would be preferable. We did not get into the details today about what that board thought in terms of that assessment. The, the ask today was going back and talking to our teams and saying, this is coming.
Sure.
What does everyone think about that? So, and, and I agree with trustee McAfee. They do an incredible amount for the county overall. We are definitely a, a high-rated EMA compared to many others in the state. This one, I will have you, you can take a look at this. This is the only copy I have of this. I can, I'll give it to Mrs. Schultz so she can copy it for the public record. But feel free to look at this. This is what some of the other counties are doing. They did a assessment too. So, and you can see too, that we have a mix of this funding. The commissioners also contribute to this, and then, of course, they're going after total grant funding as well.
Is the general fund contribution what the commissioners give?
Yes. The commissioners are very supportive of the.
Thank you.
And then, Mrs. Schultz, if, I don't have a clean copy of this, so if one of you would be so kind as to give.
Yeah.
One of these, Mrs. Schultz.
If the trustees want to hold on, Chief Burden.
That's right. I can see it digitally at some point.
Okay. Thank you. So that way, Mrs. Schultz can, can come share that for the record as well. Okay. So am I correct that, that we are, that we are fine going all the way up to the 60 cents per capita as a contribution from Fairfield Township?
I am certain in support of what the director feels is appropriate. If he thinks it's 55, then I agree with that.
Okay. I would like my, that one back, please. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that I have the latitude to do that from the board. Okay. Any other questions on EMA? All right. I will move on to OKI. We met last week. One of the key takeaways is that the EPA came in to discuss a project that they're working on, which is a regional water study. They have been working on one up in the Columbus area for quite some time. They will be pulling together this information in a rather nifty dashboard that will allow them, or anybody really, to go in and map streams, communities, and also connectivity between areas of Columbus. Now, you might be asking yourself, why is this important? Why do we care? Why do they, why does the EPA care about waterways in Columbus? Well, what's one of the big things that we have going in Columbus right now? Intel raid, circuits, Amazon has a big data center there, all these things. So they are putting in all of this IT infrastructure. So why do we care about water? They need water to cool the systems. Okay? So water, being a natural resource, is very important up there in Columbus. So that's why they're really looking at that. So that's happening. And where it pertains and relates to us in southwest Ohio is that the EPA is also looking, they are starting a southwest Ohio comprehensive water study to do the same thing for our region. Okay? As many of us know, we've got Miller Coors right up the road. Why are they there? Because of the aquifer. And we have some of the best, arguably, some of the best water in the world that comes right out of our tap, right out of that aquifer. So it's definitely something that is a natural resource for our area, and they are definitely going to be looking at that. It is going to be a 17-county regional water study for southwest Ohio. So it will be rather comprehensive. I think it's going to be very interesting to see how all that water comes together, and you never know what that could mean for our region in the future. So very, very interesting. There is also bigger picture, and I'll just touch on this, I could go into this with a whole lot more detail. I will not right now, but there's a group called the Duveaux Good Foundation, which is putting a ballot initiative on, in November. Their goal is to have the city of Cincinnati removed from OKI. Their point being, and it's going to be called Fair Share for Cincinnati. I will tell you that the city of Cincinnati is against this. They want to stay in OKI. And also, Hamilton County is against this. They want to stay in OKI. But this private foundation is saying, no, we want OKI removed, and, I'm sorry, they want the city of Cincinnati removed from OKI and then create the loan. There's a lot of hurdles and roadblocks that they would have to do to, to do that. So even if it is approved by the voters, it, it might not even go through. The reason why they're saying this is, is because they think that they aren't getting enough of the available dollars that are being distributed by OKI overall. Again, just if you're, OKI is the Ohio-Kentucky-Indiana Board of Regional Transportation. It's going to be the, the group that administers roads, bike paths, charging stations, all of these things, for, just all the different things that have come through. The Brunspence Bridge money came through OKI, so it's, it's a lot of the things that are come through that area. The fallacy with their thinking, this Duveaux Good Foundation, is that they, the city of Cincinnati has 1.7% membership on the OKI board, and the Cincinnati receives approximately 31% of OKI dollars. So their argument. So their argument saying Cincinnati isn't getting enough of the fair share is actually inaccurate because they're currently getting 31% of the dollars as opposed to what, if they strictly said 1.7% membership, it would be a lot less. So I'm just bringing this up because you might see something about this in the news going forward. There's more. I won't go into that deep dive right now. Okay? But the main thing I wanted you all to know is about the water study because that could potentially, who knows what that could possibly lead to? But that's out there. Okay, next item, I have got Clout. Couple key things that came up on that one. We had some discussion about inviting smaller townships to be a part of Clout. So I think that was a rather favorable discussion. There was some talk about the Clout value proposition and what that could mean for them. We talked about the luncheon activity and had a rather lengthy discussion about that. Oh, there was a legislative update, and this is something that was interesting. And this is, if there is a massage therapy group that wants to come into the township, there's some state legislation that took place that says that they have to get, to provide a list of employees that would be working there. So I think there's different types of massage therapy places that could come in. And I think that's what the statewide legislation was trying to look at is what would that look like? What would that be? So if that comes up, I'm just saying this is an awareness thing that, that we might want to, to look at further. Let's see. As always, you can take a look at the Clout legislative priorities if you would like to do that. There was, there was, we did have some discussion about the police shortage nationwide and some things about that. Those are kind of the highlights again. I could go much deeper into this. It was about a three-hour meeting, but just the highlights there. Okay. That's all I have. Under E other, is there anything else?
I do have one comment that's more procedural. Maybe for future meetings, because these committee reports are very detailed, and it's very important information that we receive these, maybe we should move committee reports to the end of the agenda? Because we do have members of the audience that are here for action. They're here to see us vote on something. And if we move their committee reports to the end, they might be able to leave a little earlier in the evening. I, I personally thoroughly enjoy these reports because I'm not in these meetings. So I appreciate the updates, but I just think maybe we should consider moving that item to the before-board member comments, just so that our audience members could maybe leave a little earlier. If that's okay with the board chair, since you set the agenda.
Yeah, the other thing too is, is that I am a debt that designated to attend the EMA. And I, but the other two things are, I mean, the OKI, that's something that, that I sit on the OKI at the discretion of the Butler County Township Association. So I am more than happy to share that here, but I also give a dual, duplicate report at the Butler County Township Association. So I don't, I, I'm happy to share it, but I don't, that's, that's where my duty is, is to do that.
I think it's important to share it here because then our residents are also here that want to hear it. I think the people that are in the audience, we're going through all these reports that are like, not that it pertains to me. I want to know if I can put in my miniature golf course, or I want to know about the coalition, like what discussions we have about that. And I, I just think that that would be useful information maybe later in the meeting. I don't know, hey, I'm the one that, when I was the board chair, I'm the one that put it there, but I'm thinking, maybe I shouldn't have put it there. Maybe I should have put it near the end.
Do you want to hear a random thought that just came to mind? I don't want to speak out of turn, but I'm happy to talk to any, and I'm happy to type everything up and get it to the board ahead of time if that would help. And then we could even post it on the website. That's just a thought that came up. I don't know that Trustee McAbby and Trustee Harkema would have it in time or want to do that, but that was just one idea. I'm happy to pull all of the notes together, get it to you ahead of time, and then post it on the website if that would be a benefit.
You mean the updates?
Yeah, like I, yeah, so I could talk, like if...
I like it, I like the voting.
All right, just offering that it may be easier.
No, I think, I think it's, I think it's great the way we're doing it. I just think that maybe later in the agenda, we can put it for the audience members.
Yeah, and, and I mean, and what we've done in other situations is we've moved those, some of those action items to the front of the agenda. And clearly, that, I'm still in favor of doing that right now.
Okay.
We want to move the zones over, because we've got a lot more between here and there.
Well, we've got the consent agenda is going to cover hopefully a lot of this.
Yeah.
Then you've got 30 minutes of fire presentation. So I mean...
Is it okay if we move to that item right now? Is it, do we have to wait to that?
No.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion to move, amend the agenda to do that item first? Okay. I move that we amend the agenda to, and motion A, immediately following committee reports.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkema?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Okay, our committee report's over now. My move to approve with the condition set forth in the staff report, the four items that were listed as conditions, that we approve FTZ C24-2C, final PED.
Any discussion?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkema?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes?
Congratulations. You can go ahead and...
It's actually quite interesting.
You can, you can say it if you want, but...
Not official charge.
All right, we'll move back over to the consent.
Take a break?
Certainly.
Yes.
Let's do a, what do we need?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay. Let's do, let's come back at 9:25. Recording will stay on. Recording will stay on, we will resume at 9:25.
Michael, I like having you, I like your mood thing.
Well, you can stay the whole time.
I don't want to put it in the end though.
If you ever have to leave coffee the next day, and I'll call you if you ever have to leave early, I'll call you in.
Oh, it's all right.
I was literally... I was like, no, I want to be sharing the beginning, but that's the...
I love your hair. It's so adorable.
He knows what functional medicine is.
Wow.
That's something wild.
Yep, I do love it.
And then, I, I send it over to my parents, well, they have...
You were having a very bottom...
Bottom board, you can eat your room.
I do work there. I do a lot of things for the community. So some of the employees that need to do all of this.
Yeah, Fairfield, and then like, if there's like, if there's a crisis, we're out of that game. I was over there a week before.
We did lots.
So yeah. Our group is a lot.
Yeah, two lives.
I better see if Devon's kids play along. Because my kids are too old.
Oh my God. Did Devon leave? Oh, I wanted to say bye to him. Oh, no, he didn't. Devon, are you staying?
I'm staying.
Or staying, I think, well, Francine said goodbye. Sam said say bye. Francine was texting me during.
Oh, did she, was she watching?
Yeah, well, no, someone had posted something on Facebook when she asked the question. So Devon's here.
So many golf courses, since they said it. Margaret went on Fairfield.
I know. I know, we didn't even vote on it. I know.
Yeah, could you imagine?
I know.
Yeah, I was, I just seen that person, it kind of made me chuckle a little bit. I'm like, gee, I mean, like, I appreciate that she's watching it.
But yeah, yeah. So Kenzie and Francine said say hi. My daughter's like, oh, that's so cool, he's there. I'm like, yeah, learning about government, that's good stuff.
Learn how long it takes.
Yes, yes, that is true. Nothing gets done quickly in government.
I figured, yeah, I don't really get to, well, this is my first meeting and I'm in a minute and a half, so it's like, no.
Yeah, but you've been in Chicago and in 10 other meetings today. You should go home, go to bed.
I haven't been home yet, in five days.
Yeah, you, you should go home, go to bed.
Sorry, I'll get there tomorrow.
Tell them to call off school tomorrow so that you can sleep.
Ooh, that'd be nice.
My daughter would love that.
Give me an eighty-five, I'm fucking down. I'm out of hours.
Yeah.
All those rainy days, um...
Can I go ahead and start without breaking any? Yeah. Okay. All right, we will resume with the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered by the Board of Trustees to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request. No second is required for removal of an item. Items removed for separate discussion will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda. So that would be the items under resolutions A through L, correct?
A through C to start under fiscal office, and then A through L.
Okay, thank you.
A through N.
Okay, thank you. So under fiscal officer, business in them, resolutions A through N. And we can do those all by consent agenda unless there's something that we need to pull out or... So I will entertain a motion on that.
My motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion?
Are the resolutions in a packet somewhere at all?
I have them. I don't know. Little thing. It starts with resolution 2466.
Yes.
I read it over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all listed here.
So maybe somehow in the future, we could, I mean, for somebody just to look at this page, it would, it would say that, you know, this is a consent agenda items or...
So maybe add a, I don't know, a, some sort of...
Resolutions by consent included in, or, you know what I mean? Just so it's clear for somebody like me looking at it the first time.
Yeah, but is that, would that be of assistance to add additional?
You could write fiscal office business dash consent agenda in resolutions dash consent agenda.
That's, and would that be your...
Something like that, just to make a reference to...
For clarification.
Yeah, I think even just ending the heading fiscal office business, it could be items under fiscal office business, and then items under resolutions. Because it would just be all under that consent agenda.
Officer Schultz, will you call the roll?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkema?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Does pass. May we have the fiscal officers' report, please?
Sure. In the last, since the last time we met, we got our real property tax rollback of 341,000 and our first half read of 166. That's all I have.
Meaning further, any questions? Okay.
Do, do we need to set our tax budget hearing?
Yes.
Do we do that in June, or we go to July and run out of time like we normally do?
No, we were, we were on it last year. I only ran out of time one year. We do have it on our calendar to set that meeting. And I always do the budget after May closes, so I have 10 months worth, oh, sorry, five months worth of data. So I will have it to you by the June meeting to review and ask questions. And then the July meeting is hopefully, it would be before the 15th, so we'll just approve it then. Unless you guys plan to move the July meeting. If you do, then, I was going to say, I need to know that ahead of time.
Well, that's why I'm bringing this up.
Yeah. I can have it ready for you to approve June 18th if you'd like.
I say bring it to the June meeting. Do we, are you all comfortable with that?
No, I mean, I think it's, basically, it's an estimate of expenses, an estimate of taxes, but it also sets the rates.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Which we did a couple of times last year.
Yes. If I can do that, it's just you're not going to have as long to review it because it'll probably take me till the eighth or ninth of June to get it done, and then you have to approve it on the 18th. So.
I'll re-bring it to the June meeting, and we can approve it as a tax budget hearing, right? On the July meeting.
As long as you don't move the July meeting.
And if the July meeting gets moved, we can always, always have a, just a tax budget hearing, and two of the three trustees, if they're, if they have a quorum, they could vote on it, right?
That's fine. Whatever works.
Tuesday in July is early, earlier than, it's almost as early as it can be, is my point.
Okay, it's like the eighth or something, probably.
Ninth, maybe.
Okay. That works because it's not due till the 15th. So I just remember there was one year, we changed the July meeting till the very end. No one could make it till like the last week. So we had to do it in June. So as long as everyone plans to be there, at least we have a quorum, or we can set a special meeting, I can bring it to, I can have it ready by the June 18th meeting.
Are we, just because it came up, is that July 9th date a hardship for anyone?
I can see it being a hardship. You know, that's just, to me, it's an extension of the Fourth of July weekend, so that would be questionable for me.
July, no, 15th. You have to approve it by the 15th, have to send it by the 20th.
We have to have a public hearing too.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
We have a certain number of days except the public hearing.
Yeah, I think it's two weeks.
While we're on it, I, I'm in favor of the same rates as what we had this year.
We'll talk about that when the rates come up.
It's coming up right now. I'm in favor of the rates being the same as they are this year.
Okay.
Noted.
Noted, duly noted. So, do you guys want it ready by the eighteenth and then if you can ask questions then? No? Okay.
You said you could get it done by the eighteenth, but so just go ahead and have it get to us as soon as you can and we can...
Okay.
On the eighteenth, we can nail down the July meeting date and do that.
I will have problems. I'm available the week of the seventh through the twelfth, but I'm not available on the fifteenth, but then...
Everyone's good for tonight, so we'll just keep it tonight.
I run into some other problems later on in July.
I'm in favor of keeping the rates the same as they are this year.
All right, Chief Butter.
I'm up.
What would you like to share with us?
All right. Well, Mr. McAdoo can attest. I've sat here and pared this down a little bit. It's time. I can pull this a little closer if you want to turn. All right, so thanks for the opportunity to present a brief overview of your Fairfield Township Fire Department. The Fire Department provides round-the-clock fire rescue and paramedic-level service out of two strategically-located firehouses. The Fire Department employs one administrative assistant, twenty-three full-time, and thirty-nine part-time members. Daily staffing consists of two paramedic-capable engine companies, two paramedic-transport ambulances, one shift captain, and a third paramedic ambulance if our staffing levels allow. The Fire Department responds to just over thirty-eight hundred calls for service annually. Of the thirty-eight hundred calls for service, over twenty-nine hundred are EMS-related, with the remainder being fire-related calls for service. Our Fire Department operates a very active fire prevention bureau led by Captain Peters, who's responsible for plan reviews, inspections, as well as fire prevention education. One of the projects we're currently working on is implementing a firefighter book brigade through the Fairfield Community Foundation. This is a similar program to what the Fairfield City Fire Department put in place probably six to eight months ago. So, you'll see that coming very soon. And if you weren't aware, the Fire Department saw a change in leadership in April. And since then, we've made many improvements and changes in a short amount of time. Some of these changes are as followed. We reorganized our fleet, eliminating some vehicles that aren't needed and realigning others to better fit our operational model. We reorganized our training bureau, allowing for more hands-on, operationally-based training. The focus of our training will now be based on the service we deliver and developing our members, allowing them to reach their full potential. Just yesterday, we began implementing a fleet maintenance program that includes all departments in the township, which will allow us to better track and forecast maintenance needs and costs. In addition to that, we have several items on the agenda tonight for the board's consideration that will further enhance our operation. With the help of my administrative staff, we've developed an organizational evaluation that is nearing completion. This report will outline all areas of our department, where we are currently, and what we need to do to enhance our operation. This report will be complete in the next few weeks and will be shared for all to review. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I'm privileged to lead such a dedicated and professional group of men and women who served as the backbone of all the activities I've listed above, without whom none of our work would be possible. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
You said twenty-three full-time. And how did that break out?
So, we have the Fire Chief and Administrative Captain, three shift captains, and then seven, six firemen per shift, for a total of twenty-three.
And those firemen are paramedics?
Some are. The vast majority are. We do have four firefighter EMTs that are not paramedics. They're just basic EMTs.
So, everybody else is a part?
Yes.
And how many part-time?
Thirty-nine.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on to our motions.
Administrator's report.
Yes.
I don't have much to add and most of this was covered in emails. We did meet with Risk Source to make sure that we have proper coverage. It was a great meeting. And that's for all our vehicles, buildings. We went through and inventoried. Every department looked through the schedule that the insurance agent provided us and we have a proper umbrella. We checked cyber insurance, which I had raised a couple of years ago. It's still sufficient. Our cybersecurity focus has greatly raised. We have a phishing campaign and more firewalls and we're just trying to educate employees so we don't have a breach, ransomware, malware, anything like that. Other than that, base repairs are complete. Weather is messing with some of the work, so paving should be following. And then outside of that, North and East, thank you to all of our departments that participate. They had little patrol truck events at both East and North the last two days. So, thank you to all three departments for your participation and professionalism and for being there for the students. Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to motion B.
Okay, I move to approve the anti-bullying harassment policy and the township personnel policy manual.
Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
That passes.
I move to approve that the Police, Fire, and Public Works and Zoning Department heads have the authority to hire applicants for open authorized positions once they have passed pre-employment requirements.
Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes. Next motion, please.
I move to approve the sale of the Fire Department twenty-sixteen Ford F-250 utility truck to Ross Township at a price of thirty thousand dollars and zero cents.
Second. Any discussion?
Can you tell us about this?
Yeah, so this is a utility truck that was purchased in twenty, late twenty sixteen, early twenty seventeen that at the time served the purpose of moving some smaller trailers as well as our boat. In twenty twenty, we purchased three F-150s, which gave us a total of five pickup trucks in our fleet. This is simply the oldest that serves no purpose in our operational model anymore.
And nobody else in the township needed it? And how did that price fit so?
That is the NADA list value for that truck for that year.
Trade-in or retail?
Retail.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes. Next motion.
I approve the sale or auction of the Fire Department twenty-twelve ambulance Medic Two fourteen.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes.
I move to approve the sale or auction of the Fire Department John Boat.
Second. Any discussion? Can you elaborate on your reasons for doing this, please?
Yeah, so the John Boat is a hard-bottom boat that you actually have to put in the water at a concrete dock. For us to get it in our stretch of river, we have to go into St. Clair Township and through Camp Campbell Guard to get it in the water, which creates a serious lag if we were to have some type of rescue in the river. So, what the plan is, is to sell the John Boat and get what's called a Zodiac Boat that can be put in the water on our side of the river, reducing the entry time for that boat into the river by probably ten minutes or more because it can be carried by four people directly down the new kayak launch at Renshler.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes. May we have the first resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-four eighty, authorizing the administrator to apply for ODOT safe routes to school funds. And if approved, enter in a contract with the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation.
I move to adopt twenty-four dash eighty.
Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-four eighty-one, a resolution on the matter of the approval of the solid waste management plan for Butler County Solid Waste Management District.
This is the first read, the option to approve, correct?
Correct.
Is there a date to where it needs to be approved by?
They do. There's a ninety-day ratification period from April eighth to July eighth. And they need sixty percent of the political subdivisions to review the plan and pass a resolution for ordinance declaring approval.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-four eighty-two, amending twenty-twenty-four permanent appropriations. This is for the purpose of the additional jet money for the new tip on sewer drug.
I move to... Trustee McAdoo, you have it. I second.
Any discussion?
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-four eighty-three, authorizing removal, repair, or secureance of unsecure and/or unsafe building at fourteen forty-seven Exeter Street. And you will see attached the zoning, oh, I'm sorry, the Fire Inspector's letter declaring the conditions unsafe.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-four dash eighty-three.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to be clear. We're authorizing that to repair or remove, but we're really wanting it to remove, correct?
Well, what we're really wanting to do is secure it.
So, secure it first?
Yeah, so it's removal, repair, and secureance. So, we really need to just secure it. Typically, we have a company come in and they will board up all the windows and doors on those levels look for any other entry points. And there's times when those are ripped back off and typically public works can go off and they can take care of, if there's a random break-in, but yes, so it's secure.
Securing, because I really don't want to repair it for resident and say, oh, thanks, I'm coming back in.
No, okay. That makes sense.
Okay.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdoo?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, Harkemaia?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution twenty-four eighty-four, authorizing the administrator to sign a contract with Lexipole for consulting services and assisting the Fire Department with an initial cost of twenty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars and forty cents. And this is a program already utilized by the Police Department.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-four dash eighty-four.
Second. Any discussion?
And what you're gonna do for your department?
So, what this does, it's a policy management software that, I mean, quite frankly, brings the Fire Department into the twenty-first century with policies and procedures. The purpose of Lexipole is to help ensure that the policies and procedures that we have in place or don't have in place yet meet all state and federal requirements for Fire Departments.
So, are we as a board required to authorize whatever this ends up being or looking like? As far as the policies and procedures?
Each individual policy? I can't answer that. You might be able to.
So, we were with Lexipole back when Chief St. John was here. I'd say we've been with Lexipole for every twelve to fourteen years. I cannot remember the exact year that we got it. Nationwide, they're one of the leading companies in the industry as far as presenting policy manual. It's online, it's web-based. It's actually made up of a board in each state, so they reflect on local state laws, whereas we don't have, you know, it takes a lot from a law department to be able to stay up on a lot of these employee-related issues as far as policies go. So, excuse you, it's made up of attorneys across the nation. It's been tried and tested and they're constantly pushing out updates, things that we may miss in legislation and things like that. That really risk management basis is what it's about.
Not necessarily about policing. It's about the employee relationship within the department and administration.
It covers a little bit of everything. I mean, you've got pursuit policies, use of force. You can generate and create your own, create your own policies within it, the way it's formatted online. But they give you standard things that are best practices, state and federal policies, and you can build off of those and they'll push updates out throughout the year when things come out.
So, you use it for the Police Department to do that same thing as the Fire Department? Again, I ask the same question. Is the board going to be asked to approve the policies and procedures you develop through that filter program?
Historically, they haven't, have not come through the board for a police policy manual that I'm familiar with. They push updates out that are best practices or for law.
It's the board's prerogative and you'd be entitled, once Lexipole formulates a formal policy based upon best practices for the Fire Department for the board to then vote and sign off on the policy manual. And then, as Captain Lanier was suggesting, Lexipole will generate continuous updates, which won't require continuous board approval, but the final formalized policy can be voted on by the board if the board so desires, or it can be adopted by the chief of the Fire Department.
Which is what it was done with the Police Department because I don't remember what it was on that. We voted on the twenty-four thousand to set it up for the father program and the sixteen thousand to update all year round and cover the cost of that. But not necessarily approve the actual policies and everything.
Right, which haven't been generated yet. So, once Lexipole's contract is secured, Right, which haven't been generated yet. So, once LexiPol's contract is secured, then they will put together a personalized package essentially for Fairfield Township, which would be their best practices based upon the size of the department, the services they provide, you know, all that kind of stuff, and then that policy can be voted on by the board once formalized, finalized by LexiPol.
Thank you.
And I am correct in assuming, of course, that you would take a look at those policies before by them in conjunction with our personal policies?
Yeah.
And our contract, and then talk to the administrator about any discrepancies? Would that be the process? Any further discussion? Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamayor?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2485, authorizing contract with Vector Solutions for scheduling software for the depart, fire department at a total cost of eight thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars.
I wish to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, again, what, what this software does is it, it updates what we're currently using, which is Alad Tech. Um, a, a Alad Tech has its struggles, I, I believe, simply because they haven't kept up with technology. Um, what Vector's gonna allow us to do is it's going to allow us to better track pay curves, um, better identify, um, time off, scheduled time off, sick time, um, the reasons for overtime, if and when that occurs. Um, and one of the, the biggest advantages is the backend payroll integration, uh, the way it integrates with ADP.
Will that work for you?
Yes, it will. Work great.
Will that improve your processes?
Yes, absolutely.
This is a, just a, a one-year deal?
So, no, th- this will be something we do annually. Um, so-
But you don't sign the five-year contract?
No, it's just one year at a time, yes.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Schultz, you call the roll?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamayor?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2486, authorizing the payment of increased costs from the previously approved CDBG funding for the King Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project.
I move to adopt 24-86.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I need to know, um, this is a tremendous amount of money.
So, it, this is a first for me, uh, where it's come back significantly higher than what was first, um, worked out as the scope. So, there was an increase of about three hundred and one thousand, almost three hundred and two thousand dollars. They had to adjust the scope of work. Some of the things that they said, the design modifications resulting in the construction cost increase, survey information requiring design adjustments like grading, driveway, storm sewer, they had more utility conflicts, water, like the water service and sanitary radials than they expected. There's increased storm pipe quantity and pipe size, additional curb and catch basins along the west side. Uh, so a lot was discovered that they hadn't originally built into this project. Um, like I said, this is, um, like a new one for me, uh, with this significant, um, an increase, and I'm sure, again, I don't know if this would take a legal opinion or not, but, um, I, I'm sure that this would be something we could, if the board decided, no, we want to wait, there is another portion of drainage being, I don't think any of the costs went up for that one on Exeter. So, that, that is another phase that's being done, and if the board thought, you know, we want to wait and let's apply for King at a later date and see if there's more money covered at that time. I mean, that's not a guarantee, but just one option. So, I, I hope that answers your question.
Sort of.
What are, what are-
I just, I just, um, so, if I remember correctly, we applied for this two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar grant, because we assumed that's how much it was gonna cost.
No, they, they, they give us the estimate and do the engineering guess.
Um, and now, we got that grant, and now the compacts again. Well, wait a minute, it's gonna be one and a half times, no, two and a half times that amount.
Yeah, there's a, a very significant change in scope, yes. I mean, can we have something add that?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, it's a dramatic increase in cost. Um, they typically base the, the engineering off of what's currently on, in, on the ground, uh, when we do these CDBG applications. So, they just do a quick, okay, what, what do we have out there? Where, you know, maybe they're out of a curb on a side or whatever. Uh, once they went out and actually did the survey, they realized that there was a large portion of the watershed that was never really included into the stormwater infrastructure. So, it was all the water coming from uphill impacting King, uh, that was never properly designed for. Um, so, once they actually had a surveyor out on site, they clearly saw that they were missing something. Uh, then, once he surveyed the site a little more appropriately, they reran the numbers, and what we would have installed at the two-hundred-thousand-dollar price, it wouldn't do it. It, it, there's still, there are, there are some pretty substantial problems with this, with King. There was a house that water, on bad storm events, water flows in the front door and out the back door. Um, it's a disaster, um, to say the least, but the, the costs are substantial. This was bear substantial increase.
The house that, that goes in the front and out the back, that's actually a power grid?
No, that was actually on top of King.
Top of King.
To the left side.
From the private section, house on the left.
And there's a, a number of other houses that get water inside.
And the road is starting from the, the road on the west side, uh, probably halfway down.
Did it mention that in the camera?
When the, the, the initial design, they were just gonna put curbs, I think, on one side, but after they looked at, they needs to be on both sides. So, it's, I mean, it's, they basically doubled the project.
That's where some of the problems-
And then the costs have gone up. Um, it's, that's, the, the sanitary sewer and stuff is all on the west side. So, that's where some of the problems as well, with them trying to put, you know, catch basins and curb and stuff on that west side.
I can't, because that's where the sanitary sewer is.
Yeah, they got to move, they got to move a lot.
Well, I know in, in years ago, in the, back in the olden days, when I wrote a dinosaur to school and sliced pollen bread, we used to do things in stages. Would that be possible here? We took the two-hundred thousand and do as much as this project as we can?
I haven't discussed that with them.
Do the east side, where the water sounds like it's coming from? There's something on the east side?
Yeah, it's coming directly off of that gravel lane.
Right.
And then it's shooting to the east side, but then as it gets, I don't know, not even halfway down, it's shooting to the west side, and that's where it's eroding the, edge of the road out.
Usually, we start at the bottom and work that way up. So, you would do the bottom-
But the problem is kind of the top.
Right.
Yeah.
So, if you do the top one, we still got like-
Yeah.
What are, what are some options here?
Uh, I mean-
Some options?
Possible, they didn't, we have to talk to them, denying, I, I just don't see them, I, I don't see that happening, but I could be wrong. Uh, it would be declining this or deciding to pay it?
If we did it, if we did it in phases, it would be more.
Yeah, I, yeah, I definitely think so.
For sure. Uh, if we did it in phases, we may or may not get funding for the second phase.
And then have to be astronaut for a long one.
We looked back through this road, I don't know, I was looking back like probably four times, yeah.
Are we able, are we able to go back and apply for an, an additional grant to pay from, to retro, to retro, saying, hey, look, we, you gave us this grant, but it turns out we needed this much?
Yeah, I don't-
You told us how much, and now you can tell us a lot more.
Yeah, that, that's not enough.
We got a different funding source from the engineer's office, or, kind of, maybe.
Well, we could look around. I, I'm not aware of any.
What do you think the payroll and the-
I mean, I could, I could, I could want, we could look into some things, but-
They used to have the large and the small stormwater, and they haven't been funding that, so we did lose that.
Yeah.
Because we used some of that for Green, for Green Lawn Project, so that, that option is, but, I mean, we can certainly go back to the engineer's office. I don't think they're gonna negotiate to, uh, split the price or maybe cover it all. I doubt they'd like that idea. Um, we could definitely go back and talk to them.
They're doing, they're doing us a favor by doing all, I mean, they're, they're doing all the engineering towards.
What if we don't do the payday and just use all the money for that for King?
I, the-
If it qualified for the, for the grant, it's just the amount of money, right?
Yeah.
They, it qualified for the amount of money we asked for.
I'll say that.
Uh, I could, I could see it being, it's, the CDBG funds are so tied to, to projects. It could be, I could see it being really difficult to move that to a different project. Um, it's gonna be-
I want you to ask.
Sure, I can ask.
Because payers got money before.
Yes.
Sure.
That's, and that's part of why we've been doing it one block at a time, from the bottom up.
Mr., I wrote down all those options. We will certainly call, and if you want to table this, we can get all those answers, and I'll email the board, and we can have it on the next agenda, if that sounds like what you would like to do.
Because the last couple of years, um, all of the people have gone together on the private lane and have gotten bids on having all that blacktop. And we talked to them a year ago, and we said, look, we're gonna try to work on getting this grant, you know, if you guys could wait.
Right.
So, from the thin lady, that's had more cost than the young, because-
And when they paid that, that's just gonna be, they want us to make sure that much quicker.
Yeah. Um-
What's the deadline to accept it?
They're gonna, they're gonna give us a little bit of time. But they, I mean, the sooner the better, you know, they, they-
They're wanting to start the project.
They're wanting to get an offer, yeah.
Well, the money has to be spent in certain times.
They want to go out the bid, what was she saying?
He was at Miles?
Yeah. Yeah, I thought you were saying it was June, yeah.
Yeah, next week.
So, Ms. Schultz, um, where could we find this money?
Well, we have our tips we could use. Um, we have JED money.
RED money.
We have RED money.
We got a lot of money.
Now, the cost estimates keep being two and a half times what they, uh-
Right. I don't see it, they, that bound, we can't get that. I don't see it on here.
Yeah, it's on, it's on there.
So, if we're, if we're approving this, I don't see in the resolution, and maybe I'm missing it, where, what fund we're taking it from. Do we have to have that specified in this resolution?
Usually, we do, yes.
We'll have to, but we don't want to do.
We don't, yeah, yeah, usually do.
On special request.
If you want to just tell me, I will put it in, or I can choose on my own, whichever you, and I recommend the story point tip with the RED. I don't know the RED at that, um, I have to look at the five areas. I don't know that that, I don't think one of the five RED areas is in five points. Then it'd be, if that would be the JED or the story point tip. We have no, it's all income for story point, the story point tip. We have no debt payments or anything coming out of there. If you decide that-
I think we have half a million in there.
Six hundred and ninety-six thousand.
Yeah, and if you decide the JED, uh, you'll need to amend appropriations too, because I know I don't have enough appropriated in there. The rest of them I should.
So, we would have to amend the appropriations before we have vote on this, then, or?
Well, unless you just don't give me a fund, then I can choose, but then I would-
And we vote on the appropriations later?
Yeah, then, yes. But can we motion to amend appropriations without a resolution?
Well, we probably could, but it'd be better to do it by resolution, so you have the document.
But then that's until June, so.
So, if we approve this, say, without stating what fund it's from, we could have a resolution in June to say, pay it out of that fund?
Yes.
And we don't get bid before then? No, heck no?
No, we're, we're gonna go out the bid. You know, there's a chance they're gonna come back, and it's gonna be more.
Yeah.
Or less, or less. And maybe we'll get somebody to help us with it.
Okay, I got my questions answered.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamayor?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 2487, authorizing then and now purchase order for Rumpy at a price not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents, and this is from the spring cleanup day.
I wish to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Hockamayor?
Yes, that passes. Under announcements, we have a public hearing FTZ C24-3C Optimize Senior Living will be on Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P.M. Our offices will be closed for the Memorial Day holiday on Monday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and our next Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting will be Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P.M. Are there any board member comments?
Just a question, uh, then, the CIC meeting, that date is at, at six thirty? Or is that at seven? Then we move right into it.
I had it at seven.
I had it at, at seven, okay. Um, I, I think this is, I think the first meeting we've had since spring clamp day. I thought it went really well. Um, residents seem to know it's happening, because they line up and they, um, fill their dumpsters, and, uh, I want to thank the Public Works Department, be, um, I forgot the name of the gentleman that was running the backhoe, but Brandon, man, he was going from dumpster to dumpster to dumpster to dumpster, and, uh, I think he was voted the all-star of the event. Um, but it was well organized, so I thank staff for that. I thank the volunteers that were there, um, because it was well-attended. And, of course, um, oh, it was nice to have an ice cream truck there. That was, that was pretty cool. So, I, I might vote on the ice cream truck coming earlier in the day.
Yeah.
Problem ones that were there at seven A.M. to start working, but, um, no, it was, is a great event every year. Um, and I think that, uh, I think there's gonna be, you guys, maybe you already had that, your follow-up meeting about that?
Yeah.
Okay, to talk about things that may be done differently?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, uh, that's a great job by all, and happy Mother's Day to everyone. Hope you had a great Mother's Day, as I have.
Um, I see that road, the intersection's gonna be closed out here for three months? Is it just the Morris?
Yeah.
Or is it gonna be the whole?
I'm not sure, I would assume it's a whole, typically, three months.
That's my understanding, it's-
We don't know.
It's new now.
It's next week.
The sign says the twenty-seventh.
It's my understanding that it's, it's the whole intersection, and that's typically the case when they do, you know.
I mean, they put it, they, they put a bike pass driveway in for the church and the resident back here. They put that in already. Um, people will have to, people can still access this building, and they can still access the park.
What can they get? They're coming this way on Millican, how do they get to this building, or?
Well, they have to follow the detour.
Or get to the park.
They can, they can go up Route Four, turn right on the Green Lawn, and then come down and get to the park right here, because it's, the intersection will be closed after our driveway to this park. And then we'll just have a left turn sign. Um, of course, it will be open to this driveway here. Now, I think was an important, um, I guess, question for the fire chief, is obviously working on a response time scenario.
So, what, what NineCom has the ability to do, which is the county dispatch center, is they have the ability to select and recommend based off a GPS location. So, they take into account road closures and all that stuff when they dispatches.
Right.
Yep.
So, you lose any, uh, of the equipment from here to somewhere else?
No.
Um, but I know that, um, it was specifically designed to be closed during the summer months to avoid issues with Fairfield North and what Baller Tech, um, that's why they're doing it during the summer and the months that schools are closed.
It's gonna be like the old days, where you can't get Route Four without going that way.
Yeah.
All right, I'm very proud of Fairfield Township. We had a number of ribbon cutting, so for the past, uh, few meet, the few weeks month, we had Johnson's open. If you haven't been there yet, do go. It's beautiful, very tidy, just a great, a great upcycle for the township. Um, I love the way they kept the name Johnson's, and they've made it just a really, a nice place here in Fairfield Township. Burlington Coat Factory open too, saw a lot of you there. Burlington, I'm sorry, no coats, just Burlington. Um, they do have coats there, but they have so much more. Um, I remember the old one at Forest Fair, and this was, this is completely different than what I remember at Burlington. So, uh, I think that's a, a good add for our community too, and we've got a couple other good places coming in. I'm really looking forward to the summer intern to help us out with our Fairfield Township branding. Um, the other thing I would challenge everyone to do is to think about how that Fairfield Township naming convention gets pulled through all of our processes. So, a perfect example is when we get something new come in, the zoning packet that we give them, uh, when we do inspections, but let's really try and think about how we pull that through all of our processes so that we can incorporate that. through all of our processes so that we can incorporate that through everything, because, you know, we love our neighbors, but we are Fairfield Township. So, um, I've already seen some things like that, but let's just kind of give that some thought, because I'd like to challenge our, uh, intern to to think about those things too. And that's all I have. Okay, um, in accordance with ORC 121.22, Section G1, to consider the discipline appointment employment or compensation of a public employee or official, and in conjunction with ORC 121.22, Section G4, to discuss collective bargaining issues with public employees concerning their compensation and other terms and conditions of employment, I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
And with that, we will go into executive session at 10:09. Action may or may not be taken as a result of executive session.
Good day, have a good day. Keep up the good work. I appreciate that.